Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Happy Thanksgiving and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2013. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the Board of Selectmen's Office and also by East Long Meadow Cable Access, and I have to ask if anyone else in the audience is recording it. And we note Chris Mazza from the reminder. Our first appointment at 6:00 PM this evening is our illustrious Police Chief. Mr. Melus, would you like to come up?
It only took me eight years to beat you.
How are you?
It's for the small catch, man. Say, they know you need to get to bed before.
I didn't hear that.
Get that out of your back. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Look, you've got a few items.
Yes, sir.
The first one being the Civil Service update.
Yes, we finally got a certified list. Nick was instrumental in trying to shake the tree and get it rolling here. We need three candidates for the one position to interview. I believe there's about ten names on there. Of those names, there's a lot of them that are relatives of a line of duty death, which automatically goes to the top of the civil service list, as well as the disabled veteran. To date, I think we've had three people come up and sign that they're interested, signed with the Board, and they come up to the station to pick up an application. The speed and what we're trying to accomplish here is we have an academy that's due to start at STCC on February 4th, but there's a process involved. They have to have a physical agility test, they have to have a medical physical, they have to have a psychological. The physical agility test is run by the state. Once they get the medical clearance that they're, they find them fit to go through one of these academies, they physically go down to Hudson, Mass., and they view what's involved in the agility test. And then, two weeks later, they actually take the test. So, we're talking, we may not get through that portion until maybe the end of December. In the meantime, we've still got to conduct a background investigation, background check on these candidates, as well as bringing them down to the Board for an interview and, you know, figure out who the Board wishes to select. So, it's going to be close. If this academy, I'm being told now, I've been trying to push the start date for the academy, but the State has said, "No, it's still going February 4th." They'll have roughly fifty, because other communities in the state, if academies near their areas are full, they'll gravitate towards the Western Mass Academy. The city of Quincy is supposed to be hiring twenty police officers. So, they filled the academies east, and they might be sending people out here. I've been told there may be a May academy at STCC, so they'll run two, there'll be a few weeks off, but they'll run two academies at once. So, if we can't get this person into a February academy, the hope is to get him in May. But, we're down. It's a twenty-week academy, and it's another three, three to six weeks of in-house training that we do with the person. So, in the real world, he gets hired, or this individual gets hired in February, we're not going to see him on the street until late summer.
And, and the, I'm sorry, and the officer that's leaving is in the middle of February, thereabouts?
Yes, he's, he's going to leave about February.
Now, do we have priority with regards to the camp that's going to be at STCC, just in case if the Western, excuse me, Eastern Mass fills up the academy?
They take it.
Do they hold, do we have some sort of?
There's no more holding of seats. They'll hold once you submit your application.
Interesting.
So, and they usually want you a month out, so they're talking February, they want everything January 4th, and I know there's no, in no way we're going to be able to accomplish that. We'll do our best to try to, but it's going to be very tight.
So, really, if the eastern part of the state fills up theirs and then comes over to ours and fills it up, there's nothing we can do about that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And, is there a deadline for these ten individuals to respond?
Yes, we extended it because of town hall is going to be closed Friday.
December 2nd?
So, it's Monday, December 2nd.
So, we'll know, we'll know after that how many candidates we have, so. Okay, great, thank you. Next item is a request for traffic control changes.
Yes, if I could ask the Board, Sergeant Bates is, is the author of a lot of these documents that you have in front of you. He has extensive training over the years. He's been a safety officer for a number of years. He's unavailable. He generally works a day shift. I would ask if the Board, if possible, if one member may be posted as a liaison, we could have like a one-on-one with Sergeant Bates on this, because some of the recommendations are, I know there's a school-wide.
Schools.
Or town, school zone, town-wide. That's probably going to result in some type of traffic study, some expenditure of money to have this accomplished. And, for me to bring Richard in tonight, he's unavailable, he's on his day off, for him to come in tonight, I'd have to compensate him for being here when he generally works a day shift. So, I didn't know if it was convenient to have a liaison that could come back and report to the other members of the Board to say what the thoughts.
If Deb's not available, I'll do it.
I was going to say, I think.
Deb, that's where.
Yeah, I think I'm the liaison to police and fire.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
That's okay. Yeah, I'll be happy to get together with Sergeant Bates and then I'll report to the Board. I assume on both traffic control and the school zones?
Yes.
Okay. All right, beautiful. And then, the next item is a notification from the registered motor vehicles regarding placard abuse?
Right.
If you wanted to explain what that is?
Basically, what they're trying to do is, they have a program that they instituted down in Waltham. I guess they have a, more of a handicap group that's very active in the city of Waltham. And what they've done is, they've hired off-duty police officers, and the fines that they write to cite the people for the handicap violations, is a few more businesses in Waltham than we have in our community pays for the officer. So, whatever they assess for payment will cover the cost of having that officer work a four-hour or hour shift, but they, I'm sorry, I think they do two, four-hour shifts daily. And, some of the tickets can go up to three to five hundred dollars for the violation. What they're also talking about is people using one. If you had a loved one that died that was handicapped, there's some family members that haven't turned that over. So, with the Christmas season come, some will take advantage of it and use it. To my knowledge, we haven't experienced that in this town. We've written our share of fire, fire lane violations, and a matter of fact, in the last few years, we finally changed the penalty involved in those citations with new tickets. It's interesting, I've shared it with the Department, we'll have this information posted on the bulletin board so that they know what to do, because there's a specific code that you have to put on the citation for the violation.
That was the little.
For the registry to take, to take proper action and get them involved. The State Police have been doing this as well in various areas.
Next is regional dispatch, and I noticed, maybe I didn't, this is on both of your dockets. Do we want to save that for last, and then have you come up? We'll finish the last item with this chief, and then we'll have both chiefs, and then this chief can leave and you can stay. All right. Your last item is the consideration of a BYO alcohol for business. I know we discussed this and give me your opinion, because I sort of agree with it.
Apparently, it's a business that is painting with a twist. It's a franchise that's started down in Louisiana. And, some of the concerns that I have, what they say is that you go in and you pay for a lesson on painting, either as an individual or a group. And what they say is that you can bring beverage, probably a bottle of wine. And, the literature that was given out was to calm you down, relax, and you paint. I can't even imagine what I'm going to paint if I have a couple slips of wine or something, I'd be all over the place. But, the question I have is, is it just restricted to wine? And, some of the literature had said, "No, some people just bring their coffee and drink coffee, or they drink a col or whatever." But, you know, not that I'm trying to think of the worst situation, but someone comes in with a bottle of Jack, and they start doing shots instead. You're there for two to three hours, you get a pretty good buzz if you're doing it, if that's your intent.
Right, right.
There's probably some people that would go and just sip a glass of wine and do their paint, but I don't know if we need more of a, that type of attractiveness to make your business go. And, part of their literature, they said that there are franchises that do not drink a BYO, BYO environment, but they're also the two least.
Profitable.
Profitable franchises in the business, so I guess wine sales or something. So, I would just be a little leery about opening a door to something like that.
Well, we've got this on the agenda with our town attorney, I know, to Wood Jim about it here later, so we can get his opinion on it. I know we had talked about it briefly, and I know there was another business in town. It was actually a cooking business, and they allowed the BYO be into that, but that in theory could be used for cooking. So, there was at least a related use for it, no matter how vague it may seem, you know. But, in this case, I can't see any related use, but we'll wait and we'll talk to, talk to Jim about it, and then we'll get a little better understanding of what we, you know, what we should be thinking.
Excuse me?
Yes?
I'm the franchise owner, and let you know right now, beer and wine is all that's allowed through the door.
Okay.
Okay, just beer.
All right.
And hard alcohol, they'll put it back in.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Is that through the franchise, is that through you or through the?
No, that's.
Is that the franchise requirement?
It's not allowed this time. The alcohol is, once again, it's just something to relax, and most people really don't even drink, but we do like to give them that option.
Do you want to bring them up so they can be drunk? Or no?
Well, let's wait and talk to the town attorney and go from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you, because I would give some clarification when we talk to our town attorney.
And that statement will be on my website also.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Now.
Hi, sir. How are you?
I'm going to be a little person. You just don't sit too.
Doug, now, since, now that you're both here, we both have a common thread tonight, which is regional dispatch, which I know is one of Doug's favorite subjects. So, if you want to get right into it.
I'll let Doug start then.
Okay.
We've been meeting, as has Nick and the Fire Chief. Regional dispatch with the communities of East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Hamden, and Wilbraham, and any others that may be interested. Originally, we thought Lolo might join in there. Regionalizing the dispatch functions for police, fire, and EMS is something that the police and fire chiefs are discussing, as well as town fathers, Nick and the town manager from Wilbraham, and that was the administrator for Wilbraham, Long Meadow, and administrator from Wilbraham were present as well. But, the State has a lot of substantial amount of money to push this. This has been an endeavor that the Governor has been after since his first year in as Governor, to regionalize, to try to save money. 911, your cellphone, seventy-five cents each month that you pay on your bill, goes to State 911. That money can only be used for advancements in call centers, taking your emergency call. So, basically, we have three communities that are approximately same population, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, and East Long Meadow, Ballpark, and Hamden, I don't know where they came from, but anyways, Hamden's in the mix. So, the thought is, is that we, they have, Wilbraham has so many dispatchers, we have sworn police officers answering the phone, and Long Meadow has civilian dispatchers. Right now, the State pays me to train all my police officers to answer the phone, to do emergency medical dispatch, to talk someone through CPR compressions if there's a heart call or anything like that. The dispatch profession has grown leaps and bounds. It is a true profession these days. So, the concept is, is to, they will provide money to get a building, to get, they won't buy the land, but they'll pay for the construction of a dispatch center. Ideally, they would look for a department that might be thinking about building a new police or fire complex, and we try to gear some of the room in that new facility for regional dispatch. They're talking two, two to three dispatchers, working eight-hour shift.
Two dispatchers and a supervisor?
And a supervisor.
Depending on the call volume?
There's so much, so many things have been changed. I'm, I'm on the 911 commission for the State, and we meet periodically during the year. And, there's been so many changes, this thing is like a moving target. My biggest hesitation about doing this, because we've been in studies in the past with UMass, with Amherst, with Long Meadow Springfield, West Springfield, Chicopee. And, the fear that I have is, if we find out it doesn't work, it sounds great, but if it doesn't work, we still have a vast majority of residents in this town, that it's hard sometimes to have them describe what an emergency is. They've could have fallen down a flight of stairs and crawled over and called the phone, and they would call the seven-digit number, not always the 911 call. The policies with this regional dispatch has changed. Originally, they were only answering 911 calls. So, if someone called the five-six, or five-two-five-six, five-two-five.
Prior life.
Five-four-four-zero.
Right, number. We'd have to have someone at the station answer the phone, otherwise, we would never know they called. They might get an answer machine, say, "Leave a message, we'll call you tomorrow." So, that's changed now, and it's based on, I think there's a fee associated with it somehow, but they will answer your emergency calls on 911, but they'll also answer your seven-digit line, your business calls.
Okay.
They'll also do your radio dispatch. They'll also pay for equipment that we have, that 1.3 million dollars that we paid for a whole town-wide radio interoperability system. They would have been involved in that. But, going forward, if there's problems with equipment that we have, if we're in a regional group, it would involve a consortium of the towns. They'd have people involved, and there would be a fee that would be assessed, that, you know, they're still going to cost money to operate, but they'd be there helping with equipment purchases if a tower failure, or you need ready, new radio equipment and things like that. They would, they would provide the funding for that, based on that seventy-five cents a month cellphone call. It sounds good. There are some communities, and we've got to schedule a date down at Fort Devens. They have the city of Lemonster, they have the town of Harbor, and the town of Shirley, and one other small one. Now, Lemonster is like this big, and the rest are like that, but supposedly, they're paying an even fee for the involvement in it. So, we've, we've got to schedule a trip to take a ride down there. I don't know if any of the Board members want to join us on that, just to see, to see what it looks like, to see how it operates.
I would be interested in that. I'm curious what your fellow chiefs feel.
It's relatively new out in that neighborhood.
In our, in our area.
Well, it is, but.
Where they are.
In Devens, it's fairly new also. I mean, it's only been up and running. And, there's actually one town just got back, just got on board. So, as far as feedback, it's probably out there, but it's still the initial stage, and you might get, it's really great, or there's still some bugs to work out.
What are folks from Long Meadow and Wilbraham saying?
They seem excited. I mean, I can seem excited too, because I know in five years, I'll be retired, because it might take five years to get this going, but I don't.
In theory, in theory, it seems like the plan has a lot of good to it.
Right.
Like Doug was saying, that the job has changed immensely for both, the police department and the dispatcher. The equipment that's going to be required for the town of East Long Meadow, if they're by themselves, is also changing in November of next year. They're going to start getting text messages, I guess.
Right. There's a, there's a next-gen version of 911 coming out. We have the enhanced, the enhanced gave us the ability, if you dropped the phone after you called us, we knew where you were.
Right.
We knew where, well, not necessarily where we're needed, but we know you called 911, you know, so.
Right.
Little Johnny at the house party, ha, 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 crank the cops. But, this next-gen version that's coming out is going to be more involved. You're going to need time, you're going to need the ability to try to get more information on those calls. But, the other thing too, is they're pushing, they're going to start right now, if you dial 911 from your cellphone, it's going to State Police Northampton. So, you're going to be talking to someone at the State Police Dispatch Center. Then, they're going to find out from you, "Okay, what's the problem?" They're going to transfer it down to us in Long Meadow, or East Long Meadow, or Hamden, or Wilbraham, and take it from there. What they're talking about now, and we're still trying to get our arms around, what the call volume is for cell phones. Because if we're only averaging maybe four or five 911 calls an hour, a cellphone where you have a dog get hit, believe it or not, we get more calls for animals hit than we do for a child that gets hit by a car.
Maybe it's less than half of.
So, you know, a deer, a deer got hit, we'll get ten 911 calls about a deer that got hit. But, again, you can, you can just shut those down right away, but it's still ringing, and you have to answer it. Because if you don't, it will roll over to our backup systems. You know, right now, Long Meadow's our backup 911 center.
So, other than Devens, are there any other regional centers in the State?
There's one in Hingham.
Amherst?
Amherst, I don't know if Amherst is up and running yet or not. I know Amherst Dispatch is now for Pelham.
The next, the next step for, to four towns that I've already met would be, with the Board's permission, would be to, there's a grant available to assess the needs for equipment and determine, you know, what that would be.
And, the value of the grant, this, this last one in fourteen was for eight million dollars. The one that's being projected for fifteen, I believe, is seven million dollars, and it's an open competitive process. So, it would behoove us to go in, instead of two communities, two is a region, and that justifies it. To go in with four, or if Lolo was interested, go in with five.
Who writes the grant?
It would be the committee.
Yeah.
It would be the, I think, one, one community takes lead on it, is that how it was described?
Right, one community would be the lead, be a member should be other communities writing it.
Would assist. And I believe there's a submittal that has to go in from each community, saying that they're participating in it.
There's a, a letter of attestation.
Attraction, yes.
Thank you. One of those.
It's not a matching grant, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
But, there's still, again, there's still costs to the community. There would be a.
Assess fee.
An assess fee, but there's also, like I said, the consortium of these officials. And, you know, one of the comments that I made at the meeting we had the other day is that, and pardon it, but I did say finicky sometimes, but you have an elected person come in, new to the Board, say, "I didn't vote for that, I want nothing to do with it." When it's too late, if this group of three say, "Let's move forward," then that's the process that would continue to go, because that's, you have to have that, because monies are now being transferred back to those communities to run this regional dispatch.
They set, they set that group up, two different stuff, two different functioning groups. One would be based with the chiefs, and that would be operational, you know, how the calls are handled, where they go, who they get directed to. The other one would be the town administrators, town managers, and that would be the management end of the group that would deal with the dispatcher's contracts, K ranges, insurance, that type of stuff. And, that gets paid, correct me if I'm wrong, that gets paid right from the fees that we put in, that all the communities put in, and also the portion that comes from the 911.
So, essentially, through the chair, we're hiring three people?
Three.
The four towns would be hiring three people?
That's per shift.
Per shift.
Per shift, so, okay.
So, there could be fifteen to eighteen people with supervisors.
Do you have any numbers on how much it would cost for a dispatcher at this point?
I don't.
Because not only, it would be a new position, because right now, it's being covered by current police staffers, and we're paying already on the payroll. So, would they have less of a shift, or would they just be distributed to do something else?
We would, I would still be an advocate. I want an officer in that station, because we still have lock-in traffic. Some of the other communities, and I think that's what they were talking about, is in this, Neshoba is the name of the one up at Devens, is that they were talking about putting a monitor, and a telephone, you would pick up, you would talk to the dispatcher. It may not be in East Long Meadow, it may be in Wilbraham, in our case, it may be in another community. And, they would ask you what the problem is, and they would either dispatch a cruiser, or if there was an officer in a station, they would come forward and talk. That's, again, that's a whole, that's a bump in the way we've been doing business. You come to the police department, someone's there to, you know.
Twenty-four-seven.
Well, the other question I would ask is, when the grant runs out, then are we assuming the payroll, since we have a grant to create it?
Supposedly, they say that this money will keep on funding this.
Supposedly?
Supposedly. And, I tend to believe it, as, as much of a financial hardship the Commonwealth went through, since this Governor came in office, I thought for sure there would have been a way that the legislature or somebody would have gotten their hands on this pot of money, and it hasn't happened. And, the way the legislation's written, it's for telecommunications, for E-911.
I'm interested in learning more about it.
Yeah, yeah. And, do you, I was, just to answer my last question, was, do you have a ballpark figure on how much it would cost for a dispatcher, what are they running? Just, and if you don't, it's fine.
I don't, but I, for our community, it's the cost of a police officer.
The cost of a police officer.
Salary of a officer.
One of the, the advantages they, they were talking about the Devens operation is the smaller communities, they're, they're paying slightly more than they would if it was just their own, but they're also receiving the benefits from having all the technology and having their staff trained on a regular, you know, trained to the next level. It provides them a better service. And, the larger community gets to spread that out with everybody. So, that, I mean, they're saying there's a benefit for both.
I mean, it's something that, it's, there's, there's years moving forward. It's not like six months from now.
Right, there's still some homework to be done.
Okay, so, you're just letting us know about it then?
Right. We feel comfortable, in the past, we've got into study groups, and that's been for, what's the term I'm looking for, consultants. That's been a home run, because the State has been paying these folks seventy-five to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do a study on whether it would work. We're beyond that stage, we know what the needs are. So, we're kind of saving the State money by saying, "We don't need that, this is what we have." So, we're trying to move to the next step and see, see what we can do. I know originally, when we met in Long Meadow, the April 1st deadline, and get soon as possible, that's been pushed back based on the commission meeting that was at last week. So, we're not even going to set what the monies are and what the groundwork are until January, when we meet as a commission again.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the, the ask for the Board, and appreciate both the Chiefs, I think they summarized this last meeting that the three of us were at very well, and hopefully the Board has a picture of what we're looking at. I think the ask here this evening is whether or not you believe that it's worth our time to pursue this and continue to update the Board.
Filling it, meaning, continue going to the meetings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And a road trip to.
And would you, we'll try to schedule a road trip.
That would be good.
I don't know if next week is too soon. The other locations are Essex, which is at the Sheriff's Department, and I think there's one down at the Cape as well.
The Cape, that would be a little bit.
But, this new one, this one here in Neshoba is the, is the one they really are very proud of, and.
Yeah. That's something we all want to see then, yeah.
Is that something we have to make a formal declaration of, a vote?
I think the Board could take a vote, or just give us this permission, if you will, to go after this opportunity.
You have our permission.
Thank you.
Terrific. Based on my fellow members' agreement.
Well, he's just saying they're going to continue going to the meetings.
Right, right.
Yep, and I'm interested in if you're planning a trip.
I don't know, I'm wondering about the trip.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You too.
Good to see you.
Go take you a little tinkle on my water.
See you later.
Thank you.
See you.
See you. How are you?
I'm well, okay.
Okay, your next item is unfortunately, your call firefighter resignation.
Yes, Pat Farrell's been a member of the Department for several years. He, he took a job in Wilbraham several years ago, and when he first took it, his, his plan was to stay on East Long Meadow as a call firefighter, stay on Hamden as a volunteer firefighter, and stay on Wilbraham as a full-time firefighter. His, his initial plan, when he got hired in Wilbraham, he went to paramedic school. That was one of his requirements for getting hired in Wilbraham. Big commitment, a lot of time. He did take a leave of absence at the time through Chief Brady, and he has now decided three fire departments, a life, fiance, a house, the whole nine yards. It's, it's, it's not realistic, and he, he has decided to, you know, resign from the And he has decided to, you know, resign from the East Long Meadow Fire Department. He was a real good guy for the department when he was available, but again, he's been on a leave of absence for several years, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to regretfully accept the resignation of call firefighter Patrick Farrell?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is surplus fire equipment.
Yep.
Can you start with the scuba bottle compressor?
The compressor, yep. The compressor, we submitted, we sent it out for a request for bids, sealed bids, to purchase it. We received one for ten dollars, myself and Nick, you know, went through the opening process, and both of us recommend that the board doesn't accept it. I did some homework, checked with local scrapyards. One of them has offered us a hundred and eighty dollars, they'll actually come and pick it up. So, with the board's permission?
Is there a, is there a motion to allow the fire chief to scrap the bottle compressor at the scrapyard and get the hundred and eighty dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
On a side note with that, the new compressor is in, it's in, operating, guys love it, no more trips back and forth to Long Meadow. Eric Madison, Fire Chief Madison, loves it. And we just received the forty-seven thousand from the federal government that helped pay for that.
Okay.
So it cost the town about twenty-nine hundred dollars, I guess, for a fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment. It's really, it was really nice, yeah.
Okay, next item is the eighty-one Pierce Arrow fire pumper.
Yep.
Got some interesting bids here.
Yes, guys, we did. The highest bid was a local gentleman out of Agawam, for twenty-eight hundred dollars. I guess with the board's permission.
Where did those go?
Um.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Twenty-eight hundred dollars, yeah. Everybody has different purposes to get them. This gentleman, he's a collector, he'll probably put it in his barn, he's got a barn that has eight or nine other fire trucks in it.
Really?
Yeah. He's a collector, he'll take it, and he'll tinker with it for a few years, he might bring it to a parade here and there, but it's a funny business. There was a one gentleman that was from Florida, was actually going to, he wanted to drive it back to Florida.
Okay.
Which, after, you know, putting some money into it.
Okay.
And that was the most interesting bid, because.
It was, like he took his piggy bank.
Yeah, one thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, that was fascinating, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking of, with the scrap. Said you had looked at the scrap metal for the other one, I was just wondering what would the scrap metal.
Yeah.
Value be?
Yeah.
Did you happen to look at that?
I did not, I did not.
You did not, okay, so you're.
Going by the judge, judging by the weight, it's probably not twenty-eight hundred dollars. The price, the price of steel is extremely low right now.
Okay.
So.
Just wanted to make sure we get the most big part of our box.
And Mr. Pond, I'm sorry, the gentleman who made the bid doesn't have parts in his garage that could fix this?
Not this truck, no. He does have a lap, but not.
I'm sure we'll have a reference, though, right?
Yeah, right.
Is there a motion to approve the acceptance of this high bid for the nineteen-eighty-one Pierce Arrow?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to add just an ancillary issue to this bid process, and bring it up as a, sort of a seed for thought for an annual town meeting warrant. The chief and I went through this process because, not necessarily because the Massachusetts procurement laws applied, thirty B, we were well below the threshold, even with the value that chief had informed the board about, although it's, you know, definitely best to try and inject competition into any kind of a bidding situation. However, we did this really because there's a town bylaw in the books that states that if there's a disposition of surplus items with a value of over three hundred dollars, then the town must go through a bid process that includes advertising and sort of prolonging the process. I intend to at least present to the board an idea of modifying that part of the general bylaw to come up to date with what the procurement laws would recommend.
Okay.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your next item is the emergency management director recommendations. And I know you've been working with Slavik Bronski on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, I think that East Long Meadow is blessed with people who want to volunteer and work with us to make things move smoothly, and we did have two excellent candidates who submitted, both of them coming with great recommendations, both of them with great credentials, and the chief and I interviewed both of them, and after meeting with both of them, we agreed that our recommendation would be Anthony Gentile for the position. My feeling was, and it's just as the chief was saying, Anthony is currently a dispatcher, he has tremendous experience in taking emergency calls, and dealing with emergencies, and just being, you know, on, on all the time. That impressed me, as well as, you know, his leadership capabilities, you know, he's going to have to work with all of the other department heads in case of an emergency. He's already signed up for classes and shown great enthusiasm. We also know he was one of our candidates, the top five, so he takes great interest in the town of East Long Meadow, and so both the chief and I would be recommending that we offer this position to Anthony Gentile, Jr.
Discussion.
Yes.
When did the interviews take place? Because I did, I do remember saying I wanted to take part in that. Okay, I guess I'd like to bring up, and no disrespect meant, but the other candidate has been so involved, doing things that don't cost, that involve his time, and he's not looked for much from East Long Meadow, and I just can't, I guess I would respectfully disagree with the recommendation, and I don't know where we would go from here. Because, I mean, he's, he's.
Well, I mean, we sort of.
He's done, he's done some of the same things that Deb has, has said that, you know, the other candidate has done, and they're both fine candidates, and it's not to take anything away from the other.
Right.
It's just that the other candidate has committed himself very visibly, and he has committed his time for positions that we've not really reimbursed him cash-wise, and he knows the field, and he has been with the department also for many years. I don't, how long has that other candidate been, respectfully?
Ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six.
Since nineteen ninety-six? Okay, so.
Respectfully, Westman Thorpe, putting in time is certainly one aspect that you look at when you're looking to put someone in a position.
Absolutely.
But there are many attributes that need to be considered when you're asking a volunteer to work with other leaders within our community. And I feel that I did due diligence in speaking with our department heads about working in a situation like that, and stand by my recommendation.
And I know we charged the two of you to go through this process, and obviously, I mean, it's a tough call, because I agree on both sides, I, you know, know the candidates, and, but I don't want to discount the work you've done, so I think if nothing else, at the least, very least we could do is bring it to a vote, and if that doesn't work out, then, you know. So, is there a motion to accept Anthony Gentile as the emergency management director? I believe is what it is, right?
Yes.
Emergency management, yeah.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second on necessity. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Call for opposed or abstained?
Against? Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. All right, and I think that's it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Chairman, was one additional issue that's appointed, is the length of the term with the board considering?
It's one year.
Okay, one year.
Would that be one year, or would you fall into the June, are you going to go a four year, or do you want to?
Typically, through the board.
Start the year in June?
Start the year on July first, is generally how it has been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, when are they starting the position?
Well, he's going to take over immediately. We have an acting, we have an acting director as we speak, so we have really no director.
So then what happens July first? We do this again? Or we devote to renew, or we do it again?
I would like to recommend that we fill the position and look again in, for July, reevaluate and reestablish July two thousand fifteen? Because it would start July two thousand fourteen, now to July two thousand fourteen, and then July two thousand fourteen to fifteen, is that?
Through the chairman, what I'm asking, right, what I'm asking for the board to do is to establish the length of this term. Traditionally, it has been on a July one through June thirtieth basis for the appointment, and has been variously treated as either a renewal, really treated as a renewal process. However, if the board is looking to do an evaluation and perhaps start a process in advance of that July first, what I would do is put this back on a board agenda, perhaps as early as March or April, to start thinking about that. If the board is interested in doing a, more of a renewal process, either at that time, then that would allow for, you know, give me direction as to what to do, because typically what should occur is for renewals of boards and commissions, you want to start taking a look at those late May, mid-June, and try ideally, it doesn't always work out that way, but ideally to have things in place by the last meeting in June, so July one.
Okay. So this will be July one until July, excuse me, this will be up again for July first of two thousand fourteen?
That is a decision of the board.
Well, we can put it off for renewal.
Yep.
July first, two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
If there's a, if there's an issue, we can deal with it then.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to make this position effective immediately, and to run through June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, to be renewable with the next fiscal year.
So moved.
Everybody liked that one. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Arlene, next is Arlene Miller.
Normally, I'll see you once a year.
Yeah, this is fun.
How are you? I would consider it fun.
Nice to meet you.
How are you tonight?
Good.
And you are here on behalf of the trash contracts and the tip fees and?
All that good trash talk.
I'll let that go.
Talk trash.
I hate it when people come here and talk trash.
Yeah. I think Nick has brought, kept you up to date, pretty much, with what we've been doing. We started, well, let's back, twenty-plus years ago, a group of communities in the southern Parne Valley signed a long-term disposal contract with the waste of energy facility in Agawam called Covanta, today it's called Covanta, on Route Five. That contract will be over July first, two thousand fourteen, and in anticipation of that, a group of communities, fifteen communities in the region, many of who have current contracts with Covanta, some who do not have current contracts with Covanta, but are also looking because of other reasons for disposal capacity by this spring or in two thousand fourteen, joined us. So we, by pooling our trash, came up with about forty thousand tons annually that we were able to discuss. We agreed as a group that it was, we met with Covanta and had a conversation about, should we just negotiate with them or not, because under the state laws, we do not need to go out to bid for this. Covanta, of course, suggested we just negotiate. The communities, by consensus, agreed they wanted to go out with an RFQ, request for quotes. So we did that over a process during the summer, and sent, created an RFQ together, and distributed that to fifteen or twenty possible folks, and we got some very, very favorable numbers back from the four different entities. The group decided to interview then, then, the four different, three of the four entities to see, because they were very similar quotes. We were looking for either a three, five, ten, or fifteen, or twenty-year contract. We just looked to get more, as much information as possible. At the end of the day, the group did not want to do another twenty-year contract, it wasn't necessary. So we interviewed the three vendors and said, you know, they're all good quotes, maybe you could all sharpen your pencil. They all sharpened their pencils, and came back, and at the end of the day, Covanta was very close to the others, the others were further away for us, our towns, you know, to transport the trash. So the group decided to give Covanta one more chance to beat the other two, and they did, they sharpened their pencils again, came down. So it's a very favorable, very, very favorable quote with that, that we've got an offer from Covanta, it's for a three-year contract. Things are changing in the industry very rapidly, and so the group felt it was not in any of our best interests to get into a long-term contract. Could have saved a little money if we went to a five-year with Covanta, but nobody felt that was advantageous. So the, what we're looking at is a, is a term agreement, which simply says to the communities, the fifteen that were there, and any other that are here to join us, are you interested in talking further with us at this point, or are you out?
Mm-hmm.
Are you interested in taking it to the next step of the contract? So this, what was before you tonight is called a term sheet, and it's simply, I've got a signature sheet with me, if you choose to do this. Some other towns have already signed it, that aren't on this sheet, but are on another sheet. So we have, of the fifteen, we probably have eleven currently signed. Some others are just making a decision which way they're going to go. There are some issues, and that Nick and I have talked about in the term sheet, that need clarification as far, if they go, because they will go forward in the contract. I've advised, and I believe that those issues will be clarified to the benefit of the community, or we won't sign it in a contract going forward. So what we're asking for tonight is based on the basic stuff, which is the term, which is three years, plus the option for three-year, mutually acceptable option for three-year extension, and the tip fees of sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, which is, you know, we're paying over eighty dollars a ton right now.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, we, this is one of those bad news, good news things, because I know going retroactively to July first.
Yes.
Our tip fee's gone up from eighty dollars and sixty-two cents, by a dollar, it was a dollar forty-two.
Yes.
But by signing this contract, starting in July first of this year, this coming year, it drops from eighty-two dollars and four cents to sixty-one dollars.
Correct.
So, so from what Nick, from what you folks generated, we do about thirty-four hundred tons a year, and that works out to about, not that I'm, not that I'm anal retentive with my figures, but that turns out to be seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars that we'd save, so.
Each of the three years.
Yeah, basically, I mean, it's a small increase each, but that's.
Trash is very, it's very competitive right now. We were, we were surprised, as a, as a group, that we had three very responsible quotes, and we could have gone, frankly, either way, and been served, I believe, very well for the term we were talking about. So, in three years, I expect there'll be more competition, and we don't know, the technologies are changing.
Right, right.
And trash is going down. People are starting to recycle and compost food waste, and so these people, the companies are trying to be very creative and competitive. So, I think we were lucky, right time, right place.
Good.
It is, so if you're, so, you know, again, you should bring up the point about the Board of Public Works.
Yeah, they don't agree with some of the language.
And, and I think it's because it's not clear, and that's the right of first refusal.
Right, they want that removed.
I think if they understood more about it, which we will get clarification on, and that it does not, does not compete with the idea, does not eliminate the idea of procurement, then I think they would be okay. But we're not, I don't have that, I'm not, can't speak for Covanta. But that's, that has to be defined to the satisfaction of the communities, or nobody's going to sign that paragraph, so.
Okay, so we can, we can proceed, and that will be an item of discussion before we actually sign a contract?
Right, the next step, I've already, the communities asked, the fifteen communities that were attending, asked me to ask Covanta to get us the language of the contract as soon as we could, even before the deadline for this term sheet is due.
Okay.
And they sent a draft to me the end of last week, to myself and the town manager in Long Meadow. And they, the group also said that the Long Meadow Town Council should be the reviewer of this document. My thought, and I've spoken to Nick, but I'm going to send out an email to the, to some of the members of fifteen towns, I think at this point, the next step ought to be a meeting with Covanta to define those exact, there are two questions that have to be answered by them before anybody can consider the legality, you know, the warehouses and those, whatever words the lawyers have to nitpick in the contract, that has to be clarified first. So to my mind, the next step, and I've already written to Covanta, said we would like, I would like to suggest we do this, they offered to meet, and that's fine. I said this has to be clarified, that paragraph might just have to go. I think they're very excited to have our trash. I don't think it'll be, so I've asked them to, maybe next week or the week after, to set up a, have a setup a time where we can invite, I'd like your town council if possible, to be there.
Okay.
And Nick, and our town council. And whatever, you know, five or six of the communities, just so we can wrestle with those, the two issues that I think are important, that I think we all are concerned about.
Perfect.
Other than that, I think it's fine.
Great, $71,000.
Yep, yep.
So if you want to vote and sign.
Yes.
And what exactly were signing to say?
That it just says that you agree to the basic conditions of the term agreement. This is not a contract, it's not binding, anything. It's like a, it's like a right of, it's like a letter of intent.
Okay.
We intent, we intend to go forward with the conversation of the contract.
Okay.
Because there are some communities, to be honest, there's some of them that are just sort of joining the group to find out the numbers so they could go negotiate with somebody else. So at this point, we don't, it's not in our interest as a group to keep feeding them stuff. We just want to color our group down to what's going to be really the group's interest, serious about this contract.
Okay.
And if they're not serious, we, you know, goodbye. That's...
And so it's understood that that paragraph needs to be removed, though?
It's understood that the paragraph needs to be clarified.
Yeah.
Yes.
To the satisfaction of the people.
You don't have to sign anything. This is not, this is not, this is not a document that says I'm...
Right.
This is an agreement to go forward, that's all that I'm comfortable with.
Okay. Is there a motion to allow, I guess myself on behalf of the board, to sign the agreement to go forward with the potential contract with Covanta for our tip fees?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just advise the board that from Covanta's perspective, they ideally like to have a compressed timeline, meaning something signed before the end of the year. We think that there may be a little bit of room there, but maybe not much because they budget on a calendar year, I believe. So they're trying to make their plans, which...
Corporate, the corporate issues are urgent, yeah. I don't think it's, you know, hard and fast. I think they just don't want this to be a prolonged, you know, one of the...
They're not be willing to negotiate on those items, so.
That's...
They want to get it done.
Well, and they also, I should say, maybe Nick has already told you this, we're interested, this regional idea we think is creating strength for us. It's definitely created bargaining strength. It's made us desirable for these different companies. We're looking at one contract. Each, each community would sign it separately.
Right.
But it's not like it's going to be six or 10 different versions of this contract. And that's why, and that's advantageous to Covanta. Saves them a lot of time, a lot of legal stuff, and, you know, wordsmithing 15 different contracts. So that's our goal.
And that's another reason for them to be, to work with us as far as getting any, any questions ironed out before we do this.
Right. I think they're, they, with, in the, in the case of a waste energy facility, which they are, they have to feed that with trash. It's not like a landfill where you can fill it or not fill it, you can slow it down or not. This has to run, it needs, because they have commitments for the energy that comes out the back.
Mm-hmm.
So they need our trash.
Okay.
And we're, and we're presenting, you know, maybe 25,000, you know, we had up to 40 in the group, and I think at the end of the day, it will probably be around 30,000 that will actually go forward with them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, thank you.
Same with you, Nick.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you, Jim.
Yes, thank you, Nick.
Thanks, good to see you, Tom. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, sir. Always a pleasure.
Okay, next, we're running a bit behind. Next, we have the Board of Assessors and our town accountant, Tom Coliato. Whoever wants to represent, if there's more than two of you, you can bring a chair.
Yeah, come on up and bring your own chair.
How's your foot?
Better.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, Joe. This is an interesting, yeah. Come on, sir. Nice to see you.
Okay. We are all here due to, well, why don't you explain it?
Due to, you explain it.
We are here to just have our LA5, which is a form that we need to have signed and submitted to the Department of Revenue in order to have our tax rate approved. When we were here on October 1st, the Board of Selectmen voted to have one tax rate for all, and they did sign off on this form. And it has been kicked back by DOR with the knowledge that the excess levy capacity number has changed, and they want the Board of Selectmen to re-sign so they're aware of the, a dollar amount of the excess levy capacity. And that dollar amount is $1,937.29 as excess levy.
And this, signing the first one and signing this one doesn't affect the tax rate because we had gone with a factor of one all along, right?
Right. And this is just, again, to have the tax rate approved. The factor one has not changed, that doesn't have to be re-voted. That was a vote of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So in order to move forward with our tax rate, we do need updated signatures.
Today's date? Do you want to say more to the board? And other than that, we're all set, right? Wonderful.
Very simple thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you all.
Hey, appreciate it.
Have a good evening and have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you as well.
All right. Next, we have James McLaughlin, MetLife.
Hi, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Hi.
Good to see you, Evan.
How are you? Sorry.
Take my chair.
Don't take that as a sign that he's moving you out.
I was going to say, yeah, exactly.
I have it from last...
Okay, oh, thank you.
Okay.
I do have it.
Yeah, we're just following up our presentation that we made in September.
Yeah.
Again, we were hoping about the possibility of having MetLife added as an additional life insurance option for the employees in East Long Meadow. You remember, the MetLife plan allowed for employees to get up to $100,000 with no medical. They could have a free will prepared through higher prepaid legal. In addition, they just added healthcare proxy and power of attorney as well. So having any family issues, nice to know that they could see an attorney free of charge and have those documents repaired. And as well, if an employee were to pass away, their spouse could see the same attorney for State Resolution Services to have any probate issues resolved after their passing. So again, it's a very nice plan for the employees.
Agreed.
And again, it's nice to be able to offer the employees a nice plan where the employees are paying all the premium.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Sure.
With regards to billing, who would be doing the billing? Are you looking for us to do the billing, or would you be interested in doing the billing yourself?
Well, there would be an invoice, but it would be payroll deduction.
Okay, so that presents a little bit of a sting for Corinne. If there's any way that you could do the billing?
Well, again, the first time through, there will have to be adjustments made to the employee's paycheck. But how it usually works, and what we try to do in the towns where we have done this, is, for example, the price is done in banding. So someone from age 30 to 34 has a price. When they turn 35, the price changes. But what we really try to do is make it so Corinne is not doing a price change every birthday, every month it happens, when someone might be affected. What we usually try to do is have the birthdays and all the prices change on October 1st. That way, we get the new employees who are eligible to enroll when they're first hired. They have 30 days to enroll. So really, you're only doing the actual changes once a year.
Okay.
That said, what we've done in the past is we've actually, you know, spreadsheet, we would come right in with Corinne and just sit down and walk her right through the prices. For example, in the town of Douglas, granted it's a little smaller, only 300 employees, but we had a disability plan where 70 people enrolled. And it took 45 minutes, you know, just walking through the sheets and setting up the slot and getting it done. So there is some labor on your part, definitely. But it shouldn't be too obtrusive.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Not really, obviously. As I say, the obvious question, you're, obviously rates are competitive with everyone else, and the fact that you're offering all these other services seems like, you know, one-stop shopping, for lack of a better word, for people who don't, who may not have things in place to take care of things like a will or, you know, be able to do that. So just, that's just as an observation, I have no interest in, you know, I'm...
Our employees don't have to take, it's an opportunity for them.
Oh, yes, they can say yes or no.
It's just, it's there if you'd like it, voluntary insurance.
Exactly. Okay.
Benefit of employment. Through the chair, if possible, perhaps if we do vote, to vote this in, we could have a contingency upon input or try it out for a year and see what Corinne has to say about it.
Sure.
You know, because if it begins to be labor-intensive, it may not be, you know, as advantageous for...
Sure.
Sure, that's fine.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly.
Bill, how it would usually go is, usually the first one is the one that really is where you're going to have majority of the employees, because obviously we're offering this to every employee. And every employee is going to have the opportunity this one time to sign their name and get the insurance. And how it works, for all future enrollments, only the new employees who are hired would have 30 days to enroll. So usually it's that, this very first enrollment that is...
Labor-intensive?
Is the one that...
Because you're getting the people switching over who want to switch over.
Well, and actually, a lot of times what we find is that a lot of people, if they have like a Colonial or whoever, Boston Mutual, a lot of times they're just, they're looking for extra insurance because people just don't have enough insurance.
Correct.
And so if someone can add $100,000 for a reasonable price and get all the other bells and whistles, then it's usually a pretty good opportunity to the employee.
Yeah, okay.
And it's voluntary.
We want, we want what's best for our employees.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Absolutely, we don't want to deprive them of that either.
Okay. I'm trying to think of how to word this. I mean, should we ask you? Well, let me ask you something. If we give you permission to do this and, and we find out it's too labor-intensive, is there something that we, I mean, there's not really a contract, we're just giving you...
Oh, yeah, no.
So we could, we could in theory pull a plug on it, that's a...
Keep your name off the list.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. No, no. I think, I, obviously, you know, before you vote, I think, because obviously if the board does approve it, you know, the next step would be for our MetLife group to contact Corinne because obviously we would need a census.
Right.
So again, there is a little work involved. And then the prices are based, and the price sheet we gave you is pretty consistent. But it does vary sometimes like a penny based on the population and the age. But again, we are very competitive.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, so, yeah, so this is like a tenet of the will, in other words, you're going along. And if we just, if we determine, so I guess, I guess I'm trying to do that in lieu of trying to put a timeframe on it. So as long as we know that, then I really have no problem making a motion to allow MetLife to, to work with our town to become an insurance, one of their insurance options.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Welcome.
Painless.
I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good holiday.
You too.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, sorry, I thought I got you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we are, hey, we're almost back on time, but I know our seven o'clock appointment, I saw one of the people up in the hallway, might want to check. In the meantime, I'm trying to zip through meetings, invitations, and reminders. Town offices will be closed Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th in observance of Thanksgiving. The capital planning meeting is Monday, December 2nd, 2013, 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Hearing Room. Appropriations Committee Annual Budget Meeting with Department Heads is Thursday, December 5th, 2013, at 6:30 in the Council on Aging Meeting Room. Hampshire County Select Boards Association Meeting is Thursday, December 5th, 2013, 5:00 p.m. at the Bluebonnet Diner in 342 King Street, North Hampton, IRS VP by December 2nd. Board of Selectmen's Meeting is Tuesday, December 10th, although Nick, I think you were talking about possibly moving that?
Yes, and because of the very next meeting on the list.
Okay. Next item is Surrounding Impacted Communities Meeting with GPI Regarding a Traffic Study, Tuesday, December 10th, 6:30 p.m. at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Let me go through these and we'll talk about it. Veteran Service District Meeting, Tuesday, December 17th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Munson Town Offices, it's in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, 29 Thompson Street, Munson. The Board of Selectmen's Meeting is Wednesday, December 18th, 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Hearing Room. Next Board of Selectmen's Meeting is Tuesday, January 7th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Hearing Room. The MMA 2014 Annual Meeting and Trade Show is Friday, January 24th and Saturday, January 25th, 2014, at the Heinz Convention Center in Sheraton, Boston Hotel in Boston. And the Appropriations Committee Meeting Requested with the Board of Selectmen is either February 13th or 20th. And once we tie that down, we'll get a more firm date and everyone can make it or majority of us can make it, and majority of them can make it.
Mr. Chairman, a few comments?
Yes.
Going, working backwards, if I could, then. That last one, Appropriations is actually looking for a decision?
From us?
Yes. I was asked again today, just to verify whether or not, you know, the board would be able to consider it. And I know that's a ways out.
Those are both Thursdays, I believe, right?
They're both Thursdays?
Either one's fine with me, as far as I can tell.
I'm unavailable for both days.
Well, there's a problem. But do they have to meet with the whole board, or can they meet with the majority of the board?
That's a decision with the board.
Are you...
Given ones, fine.
Okay. So why don't you get back to them and tell them, why don't, you want to just select the 13th?
Sure.
It's a lucky number.
Well, that's the day before Valentine's Day, are you sure?
All right, the 20th.
Okay.
And then...
I'm just trying to make it easy on you.
There's always one romantic in the group, yeah. So, but, so why don't you tell them it's on the 20th and there's, there's going to be 67% of the board there. So if that's fine with them, then, then, you know, we'll proceed with that date.
I mean, I can, you know, I can always pull an Angela and Skype in.
Well, there's no problem with that.
No problem with that.
I don't know if I own that whole, that whole thing, but I will.
She'll pay, she'll pay as a fee.
I'll show you how to do it.
Now, our Selectmen's Meeting on the 10th. I'm sorry. Are we still working backwards?
I, but I'll follow your lead, Mr. Chairman. But I was, my question was going to be if the board members can start thinking about whether or not you want to attend the annual meeting and trade show.
No.
Well, how come, we got a meeting on that day, don't we?
No, no, this is the January 24th and 25th.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be going.
That's Friday, Saturday.
Yes, sure.
Do the board members, okay, so generally what will happen is the board members will, will send the registration in for the shows, and the board has also attended the Friday night dinner. I'm assuming that the board members will want to do that. And then the board, I believe, has also made its own reservations with the hotel.
Right, right.
Okay.
And there are deadlines associated with that as far as getting the rate for the convention.
Okay, if you could get us those or if they're in our box, we'll take a look at them.
But we'll go ahead and register you at least for that, and then you should get things via email as far as...
You can leave my reservation for the hotel, too.
Okay.
Aren't I nice?
Then you'll get emails and you'll be able to sign up for whatever workshops are of interest to you.
All right, thank you. Have we gotten back to the 10th yet?
By all means.
Okay. I know, obviously because of the, the impacted communities meeting, that's on the same night as our meeting, and I'm sure at least one of the board members plus you would want to go to that if not more. So would you suggest, do you have a preference of, or does the board have a preference of either the 9th or the 11th? It would be a Monday or a Wednesday?
Yes, just to explain too, that meeting on the 10th is going to be a large, a meeting of all of the communities of all of the communities that are part of that traffic review, peer review that GPI is doing. So it is a rather important meeting. That's why this is coming up for consideration.
So, you can decide I'll be coming in from outside of the area on both of those days, but I should be here by 6:00.
Okay.
I have no, I would prefer Wednesday.
That's fine. So the 11th?
At 6:00, Board of Selectmen.
How's that, Nick? Will we be in the, here, or will it be in the media center?
I'm not certain.
Okay, it'll be TBA. All right. And while we're, before, I hate to keep you waiting, but, the Thursday, December 5th, there's also a, the Appropriations Meeting with the department heads is that night, and that's also the Hampton County Select Boards Association Meeting. So I don't know if anyone up here has a preference as to where they'd, where they'd rather go. If we can get, if someone can go to the Select Boards Meeting, I'll be happy to attend the Appropriations Meeting, or vice versa, so.
Tell me what date we're looking at here. I'm still working on...
December 5th.
Okay.
I could add a note to that meeting on the, for the Hampshire County meeting. The focus on that is going to be council on aging related. They have a speaker coming in whom your director is very familiar with, through her associations at the state level. She recognizes that she needs to go to the budget meeting.
Right.
So unfortunately, she would not be able to accompany the board member that...
I'd like to go to the budget meeting at Appropriations.
Okay.
If I have a choice.
I want to.
Hmm?
That's what I want to, Appropriations.
All right, then I guess nobody's going to the board meeting, you know, the...
So there'll be a quorum of the board at the Appropriations.
Yeah, of course, then.
Do you, do you feel that we should have one of us going to the other one?
Not necessarily. Who's our liaison to see me for that?
I am. I should go.
No, I mean, it's not, it's up to you. Okay, I'm not going to force you to do anything. This is America. So, all right. Are we all set with all those matters?
I think so.
All right. Our next, our seven o'clock appointment is Michael Albano, if you'd like to come up.
Mr. Chairman. How are you? Long time. Thank you.
Mr. Albano?
Hi. I'm the woman over here. Thank you.
I believe you always have the best decorated legal officer on the holidays.
Thank you. Makes it all worthwhile.
And they don't get stolen.
Thank you.
All right. Obviously, you have, we engaged, we engaged your firm to do an IMTAX study on the casinos, and I read it over today, and it's, I'm glad you did it, because there's a lot of stuff in it I would have never thought of, so. So if you'd like to take it from there, and just sort of give us, you know, give an overview, or however you want to proceed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, and to the Select Board, thank you for first engaging us in this, in this report. This is exciting for us. Attorney Phillips is with me today as well. It's exciting because it's cutting edge, it's new, and no matter what casino opens up across the country, it's a new development, and has different impacts on surrounding communities. So we're delighted to be part of this process and working with the town of East Long Meadow. I want to commend your department heads. They are, I've been in this business about 40 years, they're as good as they come. They are very talented, they're experienced, they're very responsive, and we were able to put this report together in good fashion to give you some level of inch of understanding where I think the town should go. The way we have prepared this report, however, is point-specific relative to where you might want to go with negotiations. So as I submitted the report to Mr. Bro today, I included a letter which outlines it as a draft, in case you wanted to go into executive session, because as, Mr. Chairman, as you've read it, it is point-specific relative to potential negotiations. And having said that, and for the interest of the public, I'd be happy to outline in some detail what the IMTAX could be.
Sure. Very good idea.
The report is given to you so that it's readable, and I've been involved in a million of these, and some of them you can't read, you can't understand. I tried to make it as readable and as understandable as possible. So we started off with the Massachusetts General Law, the mitigation impacts, and the key term here is that surrounding communities have to be reasonable in their approach in asking for mitigation funding. And the term reasonable is defined. And you have to show quantitatively how much the impact is going to be, not an easy task. You have to have some base of an outline of how you wish to recover the mitigation fees. And you have to also be reasonable in going forward with the negotiations with MGM, and perhaps eventually with the Gaming Commission through an arbitration process. Having said that, I've talked briefly to your town council, he's one of the best. He's very, very talented at what he does, he's experienced, he's shrewd, and he'll do a good job for the town of East Long Meadow. Having said that...
He just came in to hear all that praise.
If God had wanted you to door before you said that, I would have never got through.
I'm glad he's here. And so, as moving forward, this is very fluid. Selectwoman Thorpe was at a meeting with us just the other day, relative to the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. There's a lot of numbers being thrown around, there are no definite figures, and so we have to do somewhat of guesstimating and estimating on how to proceed. Clearly, there's going to be an impact on public safety. There's no question about that. Clearly, there's going to be an impact on traffic. And so, in talking with Chief Melis, we've outlined to you where I think you're going to need going forward, point-specific relative to public safety interests of the community. The traffic figures are still very, very fluid, but we have, we have offered a projection in here, and we've tied it to a formula where you can access, I think, a reasonable amount of funding, which will also leverage that funding down the road if you wanted to do work immediately. For example, if you were to receive a 20-year sum, annual basis, from MGM, you could, in effect, issue a bond upfront, use that payment, do the work necessary that the town would need to accommodate the increased traffic. Therefore, you're leveraging the money, short-term and long-term, to make the necessary improvements to make the roadway safe. Relative to the rotary, it's been studied many times in the town from, from our review. Clearly, it's an issue. Any increase in traffic, which you're going to get from 83, is going to cause a problem there. Our recommendation is that MGM should be responsible for the study at a minimum, and then any side effects from there, they should be held responsible. Under no circumstances do we recommend that the taxpayers of East Long Meadow be held liable for any increased traffic based on the casino development project in Springfield. There are some issues relative to recreation, and I've outlined some at Franconia Golf Course. I think a lot of people don't realize that although it's owned by the city of Springfield, East Long Meadow was very nice to donate property many years ago, going back to 1940. And part of that contingency in that agreement is that the residents of East Long Meadow would have lower fees relative to utilizing the golf course, open space, and parkland. It was never intended to be a commercial venture, but published reports indicate that MGM wants to use both Franconia and Veterans Golf Courses to lure players as part of the development project. And I think that's, it's funny, to deny access to East Long Meadow residents, in that MGM should compensate the town in some amount. Based on every study we've read, there's going to be gaming problems in terms of problem gamblers and substance abuse issues. We have outlined a proposal for you that would allow the town to go out for RFQ, to hire necessary counselors to address these issues, as opposed to what the national norm is, is to add 800 numbers, where people could call if they feel they have a problem. We think the town residents of East Long Meadow should be treated in a much better fashion than that. Again, based on studies, it appears there will be a decline in property values. Working with your assessors, we have outlined a zone for potential impact of declining property values. Our recommendation would be that you put, in effect, a stabilization fund, so if the property values go down, and the revenues go down in terms of the tax base, that you can access an ESTRO account immediately to take that money and put it back into use in the town coffers. We believe there's going to be a lottery impact as well, and we have proposed, based on the estimates that the town treasurer has given us of your annual allotment from the state lottery, anticipation of a 6.1% decline, again, an ESTRO account would be placed and funded by MGM to make sure that there is no loss of revenue to the town should the lottery money decline, which we anticipate that it will. Clearly, the paratransit, the PVPA systems will be affected, and we have recommendations relative to that. In the area of economic development, we have spoken with area businesses, we have done our research and reviewed various studies. We believe that there is going to be a decline in business, perhaps especially rather in the restaurant business. And we are suggesting that the MGM fund a economic development specialist, a business improvement and retention specialist, part-time position, that would be at the disposal of the people of East Long Meadow, to make sure that the business climate is somewhat promoted in anticipation of a loss of business to this development in Springfield. So there are a number of recommendations that we make. Again, there are areas that we don't think there is going to be an impact, or that we can quantify. And, for example, the ambulance service, there is no cost of the ambulance service to the town of East Long Meadow. Having worked with ambulance companies in the past, I can tell you that East Long Meadow is probably one of the more profitable ones for AMR. But you have a contract with them, with them, which is a very good contract, which has a response time, and it's going to be up to them to deal with that response time, as opposed to the town. So the, for example, so we don't see an impact there, where you could ask for mitigation funds. So we've tried to put this all together in a package that makes sense. We've given you numbers to work with, with town council for negotiation purposes. It's a starting point. Again, it's very fluid, but we're, we're here to assist in any way we can.
So the next step from here would be, now that we have a proposal, and once we, and please, give me your input at any moment here when I start to stick my foot in my mouth. We go from here with this proposal basically to MGM, and then it becomes a back and forth, and, because, you know, you're never gonna, I assume they're going to lowball anything, and then we start...
I think that the procedure probably would be to review Mr. Albano's proposal in some depth, to accept those portions which we think are reasonable and supportable based on the input that we received from our department heads. And then those areas which maybe the town fathers or department heads had not considered to look at and analyze and speak with Mr. Albano's associates about supporting documentation for those requests. And then, we also have a proposed surrounding community agreement from MGM, which was received last week, which doesn't dovetail with this, but needs to be blended, or attempt to be blended, because it's, you can't either be blended, or it's going to have to be an either-or situation, and that's something that the board is going to have to make a determination of at some point in the near future. The town administrator and I, and any selectman who's available, we have a meeting scheduled with local council for MGM tomorrow, to question him about the specific terms that, provisions that they have placed in their agreement, and hopefully, we'll be in a better position to understand some of the nuances of the language that's in the agreement, and then be better able to explain to the board the options that you have available.
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
9:00.
Where is it?
At his office, across the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Which end?
It's here.
Oh, okay. Well, it's not bad.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so our next step then is obviously to review this, so then we'll, which we should probably do in short order, because I know we're on a timeframe with all of this.
I'll be at the meeting tomorrow at 9:00.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions?
No. Very thorough job, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Very nicely put again. Now, you know how we had discovered that there's no input on, impact on some of the sections where there's no impact? If we can come up with something, you'll include that in there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Again, we use the reasonable cause clause, and talking to various department heads, I could not wrap my arms around something that is reasonable, that would be a fair presentation by the town to go into negotiations. Now, there are people, I'm sure, that are smarter than I am, that maybe could find a link here, but I could not find any that is determined to be reasonable.
It's the schools that, I just believe they're, they're going to be impacted, and I hear you, there may not be a way to prove it, but maybe we can find a study.
We're open.
My way of just explanation to the public that's listening to this meeting, the statute requires that the developer, the casino proposer, negotiate with impacted communities. They use the term surrounding, but just because you're a surrounding community doesn't necessarily, under the statute, mean that you're an impacted community. And therefore, MGM has taken a position that, basically, the outright surrounding communities are not impacted communities. However, even though they've taken that position, they are, they are saying in their proposal that in order to keep a good relationship with the surrounding neighborhoods and communities that they are willing to enter into a surrounding communities agreement, which is their right under the contract, even though they might not, we might not be determined to be a surrounding community who's impacted if the matter is thrown before the Gaming Commission, who is the ultimate determiner, if there's a dispute between the developer and the community as to whether you qualify under the statute for compensation for the project.
Good. Thank you. All right, so we will review this, and then...
Thank you.
We will, I assume you'll be walking in step with us from there on in, so...
Anything you need, Mr. Chairman, we're there for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Great, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, is there a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 1st, 2013?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 15th?
So moved.
2013. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 21st, 2013?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to accept the executive session minutes of October 1st, 2013?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the executive session minutes of October 15th, 2013. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to accept the executive session minutes of October 21st, 2013?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, under old business, okay, Nick, we've got, coincidentally, our next item is the casino impact. We have update from November 12th to 15th.
It's just business for the board to catch up on.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And really, the item B as well.
Okay, yeah, there's just, there's no request of some records. And a traffic meeting update?
Through the chairman, I would defer to Selectman Thorpe, if she had anything to add about the traffic meeting from yesterday.
Well, not much. I mean, attorney, attorney, Ms. Albano, and our attorney, our counsel was there. We don't agree with everything that they've put out, and it's going to be addressed in our report that we sent, that's being sent to them. So I think they came up with 5.5% of an increase in traffic for us, and it may be believed that it is definitely going to be higher than that.
It seemed like it, just because of the Route 83 corridor.
Yeah, it comes out to be 70 cars more during rush hour, and we think it's going to be a little more than that.
Okay.
So...
All righty.
It was, we met, they met the guy from GPI, who's doing the study, and...
Good. It's a, as Mr. Mayor said, it's a fluid thing, so we'll continue to get the...
It's definitely flowing.
Okay. Next item is, Nick, the charter franchise renewal. They're starting, what, two years in advance?
Yep. Just a reminder that probably need to get the meeting going as soon as possible, and I'll work with Selectman Thorpe.
Okay. Sure, okay.
Okay. And then next item is a notification, right after they want the renewal, a notification about their fees, their rates for, upcoming rate changes for 2014, which I noticed some of them go up a dollar, and the only ones, there's one that goes down significantly, which is the, I forgot exactly which one it was.
One goes up three dollars.
Yeah. So.
That's a big jump, and it's the one, the smallest package.
Yes, yeah, yeah, the basic or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, of course, you know, when that jumps, the taxes and everything that's based on the fee is going to jump as well.
Yeah.
It's definitely a conversation.
Right, those are just notifications. When do we have that annual meeting where five or six taxpayers come and complain about charter?
Well, that would be part of-
That's what happens.
That would be part of the renewal process.
Okay.
So the cable advisory committee would meet and discuss the outline of what to do, and when to propose these public meetings and so forth. But generally, there would be at least two likely at this point in 2014 to provide those findings to them and have them at the meeting.
Okay, thanks, Nick. The next item is an update on the regional grants, Nick.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just go through them, the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, just wanted to advise the board that on one part of the grant, the housing portion, that there is a waiting list for housing projects, however, there, the grant administrator, in this case Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, is willing and able to put people on a list for emergency, so that if anything opens up, they can contact the PVPC directly, not this office, it would be PVPC, because they handle all of the registration and the administration of it. And that number is 781-6045. They'd ask for the administrator for the housing project, for the housing improvement project. Then, the next one, the shared public health nurse, I just advised the board that the paperwork went in to approve, well, to be participate in the 2014 grant application. The information tech, your information technology director also sent in a grant request to become part of a community, a regional community portal, and maybe the next time he comes in, he could explain a little bit more about that. Human resources, remind the board that we've participated in a study, we've received a report back, and Joshua Garcia would like to schedule a time to meet with the board to discuss that, and perhaps see whether or not he'd like to go forward. He's also really listed a number of options, how it could proceed, so I wonder if the board might have any kind of idea either this evening, or maybe at the next meeting, how you'd like me to proceed. Would you want Mr. Garcia to come in and meet with you, and, or would you like some other combination?
Wouldn't be a bad idea to have Mr., through the chair, have Mr. Garcia come in.
It's a very good idea, that way we can-
Try and schedule, and then maybe for the next meeting?
Sure, for the ninth, yeah.
Eleven.
Eleven, I'm sorry. Short-term memory. And then the DLTA?
Right, we have not really received too much response on projects, although there's still time, and if there is, I would, if there are signatures required, I'll let the chairman know, because I think that's what would be the appropriate protocol. But it has been sent out to all department heads.
Okay, thank you. The next item, there's four candidates for the MRC. We have our director here. Would you like to come up? How are you tonight?
Good, how are you? Good to see you. Thank you. Good for you.
So you're appointing how many?
Four.
Four? So you have four candidates, you're appointing four?
Yes.
All in favor?
It's easy.
Whoop. So we have four up, four that we would like to appoint to the team. One is Todd Gardett, and he is actually a member of our CIR team also, very ready and able to serve. Donald Heath, he is a retired teacher, and he is active with the rec department, he does a lot of volunteering with them.
He does.
Brad Hoffman, he is a risk manager over at Mass Mutual, and does some volunteer time with the field club of Long Meadow. And Kyle Murray, who is a mental health, he's involved with the mental health industry, and that is something that actually would be really beneficial for our team. All four candidates attended the November 2nd train-a-thon, so they're trained and ready to go upon your approval.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Comment, I just want to applaud you for doing a great training. It's a great day, you did a great job putting it together, so.
Thank you.
You're to be thanked and commended for the hard work that you're doing.
Thanks.
I missed it.
Listen who.
Okay, any further comments?
The application, who's generating the application?
The application was designed by the town administrator with a cover letter that comes from me, and they go through a query process, which you already know about.
Great.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
In light of that, is there a motion to accept the four candidates for the medical reserve corps that I presented before?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
So just like to keep your attention just for a couple more minutes, I know you guys are busy. We have about a total of 21 on our team now, and just to let you know, all except to have been trained, gone through training. So that's a pretty big accomplishment. And did want to thank you for your support for the train-a-thon that we had recently. We had 45 people that attended, and as you know, the mobile disaster field kitchen was there, they did a great job with lunch, and everybody did enjoy the content, some a little dry, but the person that was doing the training, she was good, yep. And also wanted to let you know, I think you already know this, but the MRC received an award of sorts. We came in seventh in the nation.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Outstanding.
The entire nation.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
A lot.
Don't inundate us with numbers here, okay?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so very surprised.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And also just to let you know that I will be doing a presentation on preparedness on behalf of the MRC on Monday, December 3rd, over at Emeritus. It'll just be a short presentation, but a good way to get word out that we are here in town and ready to go.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's all.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work and your patience.
Thank you, have a great holiday. You're so lucky.
Yeah, I was.
Thank you, have a great holiday.
You too.
Okay, next on our agenda is the brown property. There's a request from the Islam metal Soccer Association to consider proceeding as far as soccer fields that were part of a potential plan when this was first presented years ago. And from what I understand, there's also, in light of that, the rec department has some thoughts, and planning board has some thoughts on the property and the buildings up there. So I guess, is that, is that where we stand, or is there anything further to add?
Right, we, Mr. Chairman, just as you summarized, so what it is, is all of these parties seem to have an interest in meeting with the board and discussing these ideas.
Right.
And the question for the board is, how best to proceed? Do you want to have that as a meeting during, an appointment during a regular meeting? Do you want to meet with each group individually over a couple of meetings? How would you like me to schedule it if the board is indeed interested in, you know, pursuing and listening to these ideas?
Well, other than, obviously, we know what the soccer association's looking for, is there any way we can get the ideas from the other two groups before they meet with us, and then meet with them?
That's a great idea.
So we have an idea to review what they're thinking?
Well-
I mean, does that, you know, is that something you think is feasible?
I can go back to recreation, go back to the planning board, and see if we can get some more specifics.
Okay, all right, thank you. The next item, we have a request from the American Legion. Every year, the American Legion does a wonderful job on Memorial Day, putting together the Memorial Day ceremony that we have in front of and inside the high school. And I guess it's come to their attention, which I didn't realize, they put out a sum of money during the course of this for various items relating to this event, and I guess there's, they found out that there's money through the town that can be used for this, instead of they've been using volunteer money. I don't know if you can shed any more light on what fund they're possibly thinking of.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with the town accountant, and we believe that there would be funding perhaps through a celebrations account, so that going forward, if the board so desired, that this could be part of that budget. However, in this particular case, because the bills that are in question here were accrued-
Previous tax, previous year.
In the previous year, the best that we could do at this point, if the board decided, is add this as one of the components of a prior year's bill article for annual town meeting, which those do occur on occasion. Recall that that would be, I believe would require a 9/10 vote at that point. The total here, I think, something like 700 or so.
Yeah, about seven, looks like 770, somewhere in there.
Around.
Yeah, that would be fine. And also, so we can approve going forward, using the money out of the celebrations fund for this, because obviously, it's not a legion event, it's a town event, and they're doing it on the town's behalf, so. It's been, it's been nice of them, obviously, all along to get their volunteers to pay for this, get, you know, volunteers, donations towards this. But obviously, being a town event and having, having the money there, I don't see, I personally don't see a problem with it, I don't know if anyone else has a, especially we're only talking 700, $800.
I have no problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it, but just, where did the shirts go to?
The T-shirts?
Mm-hmm.
I believe those are the, don't the kids wear those?
Oh, the kids are wearing the shirts, I got it. You're absolutely right, thank you, thank you.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, based on what I'm hearing from conversation from the board, at least, this could be possibly brought up as a prior year's bill. Well, maybe, that's something I'd like to know. Don't necessarily need to know tonight, because that's obviously annual town meeting. But then going forward for the budget process, which will begin, put this in as a specific, so that it would be allocated a certain amount of money, perhaps every year for this activity.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to that regard, I don't know if you want us to a dollar amount, or-
I don't even know that I necessarily need a vote from the board, other than to-
Okay.
Yeah, because the money's already been set aside, right?
Right, for-
There is money in a celebrations account, that's my understanding, yes.
All right, then I assume, based on the tone of the board, that everyone's in favor of doing that, so.
Yes.
All right, and then we'll discuss before the, before the town meeting, obviously, well, in advance of the warrants, how to put that on, and maybe get them reimbursed for this past year at least. All right? Wonderful. The next item, there are a large number of liquor licenses in there to be signed, and we have to sign those, there's a, there's a time limit on these, because these basically have to be mailed tomorrow, so we have to get these signed tonight, and sent out to the state, so they can be returned in, what is it, the begin, first week, second week of December?
That's generally what we hope to get, yeah.
Okay. All righty.
And just to lay that out, what will happen is, these will go to the state, the state will conduct their review of the applications, and then return them back to us as quickly as they can. Remember, they're doing it for all the towns in the Commonwealth. And then from there, we hold on to the licenses, we notify the license holders that they've come back, that they can come pick them up with payment. And, you know, we hope not to, we strive not to, but sometimes there are those license holders that sort of wait until the last minute, but we do what we can to encourage them to come in early.
Okay. All righty. Very good. And the next item, it's the Bay Path College Groundbreaking Recap, which I will defer to Selectman Bronski.
Well, I just wanted to say that I was thrilled to be there, on behalf of the board, and wanted to keep this myself, but there was nowhere to put it in my house, so I wanted to present to you, Mr. Chairman, the official shovel, I kept some of the dirt on it.
Job opening in spring, because I got a shovel on the house.
And you want to wear the helmet, too?
No, that's okay, you'll mess up my t- hair.
But I figured we could give this to Nick, and he could-
Yes, I could put that in the Selectman's office or somewhere, and that-
It was a lovely event, if you want to elaborate on it, Nick.
I would agree 100%, it was a very, very nice event, very celebratory event, and really just commend Selectman Bronski on behalf of the board, I think she summed it up very well in her remarks.
Very good. Thank you both, thank you both for being here.
It's our first shovel.
I got about 100 jokes, and I'm not going to touch them, so. All right, the next two items under new business, I'm going to, I'll explain them, and then, or at least one of them, and then I'm going to recuse myself, because I have personal knowledge of the participants in both of them. The next item, item 18, there was a request from the Arbor's Kids. Originally, this was for what they mistakenly called a vendor's fair, which, as we all found, as I found out, as the planning board informed me, when you're in the industrial garden center of Islam metal, you cannot have a, you cannot have retail sales. So therefore, what they were planning on doing was having, it's basically, what it's basically turning out to be, is a holiday open house to promote the arbers, get people in there to see the building and everything. And I worked with them, I worked with the planning board, and what we, what we came up with was, any vendors who still want to come, obviously, because if they can't sell anything, it might not behoove them to come there, but they can always take orders to be filled at a future date, and pay for it at a future date. But it's going to be a holiday open house, and it's, I believe it's on December 5th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And what they're requesting is, they're having it, they're having a firm cater it, and they're requesting a one-day liquor license for beer and wine for that day, and a temporary food service permit. And the changes that were made between the management of the arbers and the planning board were sufficient for the planning board to not have a problem with it anymore. So after much, much negotiation, we got that, we got that through, and everybody was happy. The next item is a request from Bentley's Bistro to stay open until 1:00 a.m., actually on tomorrow night, which is the night before Thanksgiving, in conjunction with an Islam metal reunion. Once again, this was originally published as 2:00 a.m., which, which we got some flack about, because they cannot be open until 2:00 under their permit, and we knew that, so they corrected that to 1:00 a.m. And other than that, I think I'm going to go fill my water, and I'll let, you guys can flip to see who takes over from here.
Do you want to start, or do you don't need to?
You go ahead.
Let me lead first.
Okay.
Just seems so strange, alcohol and children.
I would entertain a motion to accept the request of the Arbor's Kids and Jean Santos to hold a vendor fairs for their one-day liquor license, beer and wine, Thursday, December 5th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second out of necessity, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Also accept a motion to grant them a temporary food service permit, approval pending, planning board response, insurance is on file.
So moved.
Second out of necessity, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Want to take the next one?
Okay, the next one is a request for Bentley's Bistro to stay open until 1:00 p.m. on November 27th, in conjunction with an Islam metal reunion.
1:00 a.m.
1:00 a.m., I'm sorry, did I say p.m.? I'm so sorry. Okay, I'll try again, request from Bentley's Bistro to stay open until 1:00 a.m., November 27th, 2013, in conjunction with an Islam metal reunion.
So moved.
Second out of necessity, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that moves.
Very good.
And that's within their, their agreement with planning board also.
Mr. Chairman? Boy, he didn't think we could handle that quickly, I guess.
I know. Didn't it go get him?
Interested in your business, want to talk to you about it.
Sure.
We missed you.
I'm sure.
All right. Now, the next-
Twenty.
Thank you very much. Now, the next item, we have a request from the Masonic Temple for a one-day liquor license, beer and wine, for Saturday, December 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in the Masonic Hall, in conjunction with a baby shower. Is there a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Saturday, December 7th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seems like they're our biggest banquet hall in the city in the town. And the next item is a request from Father Peter Swar, director of St. Mark's Episcopal Church, for a three-day liquor license, beer and wine, for Friday, December 6th, 2013, through Saturday, December 7th, from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, December 8th, from 1:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I don't know if it matters, it doesn't say in regard to what, Nick, but is that, you know, what the event is, I don't know if that matters.
Oh, they're offering a play, Christmas Carol.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, is there a motion to approve the three-day liquor license?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All righty, is there a motion to approve the three-day liquor license?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also an entertainment license for the same event, and the insurance is on file.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item is from Maya for, as an agility recovery notice, which was, when I read it, was nothing like I thought it would be when I heard the words.
Just briefly report to the board that I recently received this notice that you have in your packet about agility recovery and subsequently participated in a webinar that Maya put on with this firm. Agility recovery is a service that Maya is offering its members to be a resource, one of the main points is to be a resource to obtain materials and, in some cases, personnel to assist in getting municipal government back up and running as quickly as possible in the wake of a disaster. And so it would have everything from modular office space to information technology equipment and furniture available, and they are national, so they can draw this, materials from other places that won't be affected and do it in a fairly rapid fashion. In some cases, as quickly as half a day, depending on the ask. So that was a very good service, doesn't cost the town anymore, and we have that now available. There are also other features within that that are detailed and would be terrific to roll out over time. Employees and the town could upload, for example, emergency management documents and have them stored on those secure servers. And then if people wanted to get down and employees wanted to get down to the point where they wanted to upload their own personal plans for emergency response, what, you know, down to the point of figuring out what to put in your kits and where your family members are gonna be and all those phone numbers. So it's a very detailed presentation, just beginning to scratch the surface of it, but it is something that we have available to us.
Very good.
That's, you know, you always go back to that October two years ago when the power's off for such a long period of time, and it's nice to know, it's nice to know we have this, we hope we never need it, but it's, you know, it will make things a little easier if something like that should happen in the future.
Well, one of the bigger needs in this type of a situation is power generators.
Right, right.
And because they are national, they can draw, and so, because if it happens like it did, everybody's gonna be looking for it.
Yeah.
And something like that, I think that that would test the scale of what they could do, but they seem pretty confident to be able to help out when necessary.
Great, great. Wonderful. Yeah, that's good, that's great. The next item is Neighbor to Neighbor, which I think, it seems like, based on what I read, we used to do in conjunction with the, what's that called, the Welcome Wagon type thing? Something similar to Welcome Wagon.
Yeah, I would say Welcome Wagon, yeah.
It's like, that's, I'm showing my age, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I would say, that's what I was thinking of, Welcome Wagon, yeah.
But I think this is a great idea. I don't know if the rest of the board got to read this little Welcome East Long Meadow letter, but...
I received an email from the group. This letter, save for the updating with the current board members, is what the letter was, and that was from 2008. And my question to the board is whether or not one or all amongst you might want to take a, try at putting together the letter, or if you'd like to see a couple of drafts from me and have the board work on it, but either way, just opening it up.
I would love to see another draft.
Okay. Sure.
Not that it was bad or anything, but 2008?
Well, yeah, but it basically says the same thing, I mean, but yeah.
But let's see what Nick can fly it up.
Well, so, for example, in here, it refers to East Long Meadow is a green community, and certainly we are, but it refers to a state recycling effort that we were third in at the time, and I don't know where we are today.
Okay. Point taken.
Yeah.
I'll have something before the board at the next meeting.
That would be great.
Okay, great, thanks, Nick. The next item, I don't know if anyone watches the news, I know you don't.
I do.
But from the ABC News, from 5:00 to 6:30 this week, I think they're continuing it, they're doing, they're highlighting a town, and they highlighted, I think, South Hadley Monday and tonight, I forgot who it was, but they're highlighting East Long Meadow tomorrow night. In conjunction with that, they're doing a food drive for the senior center. They're gonna be broadcasting it all day. Carolyn Brennan, our, I almost said rec director again, our senior center, Council on Aging Director, is going to be on Channel 40 at 6:30 tomorrow morning discussing this, and they're gonna be broadcasting from, I believe, the media room at the senior center during the whole hour and a half news. In the first segment, they're gonna be discussing, they're gonna be talking to Carolyn about certain things relating to the town. The second segment, from 5:30 to 6:00, they've been saddled with me. And then the third segment, at 6 o'clock, they're trying to get Gordon Smith from the school department. So in between, they're gonna be highlighting different businesses in town. I believe Ed Carroll's gonna be doing some, well, once again, depending on the weather, some location shots at the new Bay Path and the Norcross House and the Depot, and so it should be a good, a good little advertisement for the town. We were trying to get the high school cheerleaders over there, but I think we're gonna get a representation of students to be in the background over at the school to sort of raise a ruckus and make it a fun event. So if anyone wants to watch it, obviously, it'll be on Channel 40, so. The next item, notification from Western Mass Electric regarding vegetation management, Nick.
Listen, the annual notice sent to the board outlining their plan, and if the board has any comments on it, they are looking for the input.
Okay, great. The next item, it's a letter from Carl Olin, our chairman of the Fourth of July Parade Committee, and I don't know, do you want to read this? I've got it right here if you want to read it into, reading it to record.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the computer.
Because for those of you who, whether you've been here forever, or whether you're new to town, or whether you just come here for the parade, which would probably mean you won't be watching this, but Carl and his crew have done a tremendous job for a couple of decades on this parade, and unfortunately, I'll let, I'll let our clerk read the letter, and then we'll go from there with the comments.
Okay, to members of the Board of Selectmen, due to recent family events, future personal commitments, 2014 will be the last year serving as parade chairman. I have been a member of the parade committee for over 30 years, served as the chairman for over 20 years, all of which I have greatly enjoyed, but it's time to move on. Some information regarding the current parade committee. There are 10 members who plan and organize the parade, serving in following positions: chairman, publicity, participation forms, and organizing, participation forms, including all mailings and preparing parade lineups; treasurer, community and town business contacts; float, general areas, and music coordinator. Only four members are town residents and the other six are non-residents. Seven members have served for 20 years, one for 15, and two for three years. Over the years, we have appealed for new members via press releases, LCAT, and meetings with the selectmen, as there were concerns regarding an aging committee, years of service, more non-residents than residents serving, and personal commitments. Unfortunately, these attempts did not produce the residents serving and personal commitments. I'm sorry. Unfortunately, these attempts did not produce the anticipated results of new members. Consequently, I've canvassed the present committee as to their intentions to serve on beyond 2014 parade, and nine members will be resigning after 2019, 2014. Our music coordinator will be the only returning member, and he is a non-resident. Other group, another group vital to the parade is the, are the marshals who assemble all the units on the parade day. Many of these dedicated volunteers have dwindled recently, resulting in logistical difficulties on parade day. We are now in a critical stage regarding the future of the parade. The parade committee, however, will commence its formal meeting in January 2014 and meet monthly until June, when we meet two times a month. We hope that the community residents will step up and join us so we can work with them in serving as mentors. All those involved in the parade have enjoyed presenting this annual event for the community. We also have anticipated the tremendous, appreciated the tremendous support from the town residents, all town departments, businesses, civic groups, members of the private sector, participants, spectators, and all who assist in, sit and assist behind the scenes. East Long Meadow is well-known for its Fourth of July events, such as the carnival, concert, fireworks, and parade, which would not take place without the dedicated volunteers who make it happen. In our case, we have reached a stage where new volunteers must step forward and take over the reins. I have thoroughly enjoyed my involvement in this patriotic event and extend my appreciation to everyone who has helped, but especially to a truly dedicated group of people who are members of the parade committee and marshals. We ask that you join us in planning the 2014 parade, but also realize that if volunteers do not replace members leaving, the parade as it presently exists will not take place in 2015. Anyone interested in joining the committee can call Carl at 525-2952, or the selectmen's office at 525-5427. Respectfully.
Thank you. Obviously, the parade is just a huge feather in the town's cap, and it's something that people look forward to. And this, obviously, is a serious, serious situation. I know for years Carl has come before us and said, "We need help, we need help, we need new blood," and it hasn't really happened, but now we're at the, you know, put up or shut up stage where if we don't get, if we don't get people to, to help out and join these committees, then after this year, we may not have a parade. I was even thinking, to the extent that if someone was really interested in getting involved and thought they could even take over as far as Carl's position, it would be a great idea if someone was interested in doing that, to step up now and sort of shadow him from now till the parade, and that way, they're not going in green next year and not having any idea what to do. So, you know, all we can do is ask. If there's anybody out there who, who wants to help with this, it's a wonderful cause, it's a wonderful event, it's, you know, it's put the town on the map in certain circumstances, and it'd be a shame to see it go. So if anyone can help, you've got the phone numbers, please step forward and help us.
Great.
Before we move on, just one last item here. I don't know if anyone remembers, last year, the East Long Meadow and Long Meadow football teams had a food drive in conjunction with the Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving Day game. This year, due to technical difficulties and problem, communication problems, we, myself and Paul Santinello, Long Meadow Selectmen, weren't able to sort of get the coaches on the same page to get a food drive going before the game. However, there is gonna be a food drive at the game, so anyone who can, who can donate, if you bring, if you bring a non-perishable food item to, to the game, which is in Long Meadow this year, after the game, these items will be split up between the East Long Meadow Food Bank and the Long Meadow Food Bank. So just, just a word out there, that that is going on, so if anyone who was going to the game, that would be a great help. Thank you.
Is there a little wager going on?
Well, it's not a wager, there, you know, we have the Selectmen's Cup.
Yeah, that's what I want.
Which, which unfortunately, I've been on the board for four and a half years. I watched Selectman Driscoll give it to them the first year. I gave it to them the next two years. I'm hoping this year, I get it at the game.
You get it at the game, okay.
So I'll be there. From what I understand, not to cast dispersions, as of, we had a little press conference the other day, and as of then, Long Meadow can't seem to find the cup, so.
Oh.
I know they built a new school, so it's somewhere in there, so hopefully, you know, hopefully I'm not getting a Starbucks cup if we win on Thursday, but hopefully they'll find it. I know there were a few more places they were gonna look.
Look, okay, all right. Come on, Lance, let's see, we're gonna find out where that is.
And now I will turn it over to you for the Board of Health.
Okay. Item 27, you have, we had discussions with regards to Sonny Mart's certificate. He has completed the Serve Safe, the Serve Safe course. I did follow up with a phone call to the place, just because we needed something that said he actually passed the test, because in the letter that we received, it said it would be available in three weeks. So what she did is she did send an email over, and we'll put that with it saying that he actually did, she's not gonna say he did very well, but he did do very well, and we'll say that he actually passed.
Right.
So we can put that with that.
Great.
So the only other thing that I was looking at was, the other contingency was about with regards to the violations. I have not spoken with Amy with regard to the violation, but I would think if there were violations, that she would have contacted the Selectman Bronski.
Yeah.
So are they still outstanding?
I believe, I believe that she's addressed, I'm looking at her last note was as of the 22nd, which was earlier this week. And without going into a lot of detail.
Okay, all right, then, well, let's just put it this way, that, the issue with the Serve Safe certificate has been resolved.
It has.
And then we will just kind of get...
And her report is page 85 of the packet.
Okay. All right, then. All right, so now we'll go to the rabies update clinic, which is, Mr. O'Connor has let, or excuse me, our animal control officer has let us know that there were 24 dogs and cats that were vaccinated and three new licenses that were issued during the clinic. He did admit that there was, it was a little bit lower than their average of 58, but he anticipates that the one that will, the next clinic that will be held in March should pick up, and he'll let us know a date as soon as A and W Brown and the HCC VecTech Club, they come up with a, with a date.
Great.
Thanksgiving trash. This is just a reminder of the Thanksgiving trash schedule. Residents are advised that the trash pickup will follow the holiday schedule for Thanksgiving week. November 25th to 30th, trash pickup will follow its normal schedule, Monday through Wednesday. There will be no pickup on Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 28th. Thursday's pickup will be on Friday, and Friday's pickup will be on Saturday. Recyclables pickups will follow the same schedule. This will be a paper recycle week. They're reminding you to put your trash at the curb no later than 7:00, excuse me, no later than 7:00 a.m., and leave it there until 6:00 p.m. or when it's picked up, obviously. In the event that the trash is not picked up by 6:00 p.m. due to poor weather, residents should leave or put their trash out for pickup day the next day by 7:00 a.m. If you have any questions, you can call Allied Waste at 413-592-9411, or certainly call the Board of Selectmen at 5413-525-5400, extension 1100. And that is it for me.
Thank you, thank you. Next item is Town Council.
Excuse me.
Oh, the dump site.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, there is an item under new business.
New business, and I'm gonna refer that to you, Nick, if you don't mind.
The Board of Selectmen has been given notice about a condition on a property in town at 299 Maple Street that is been observed by Mass DEP as being used as a dumping site, which is in violation. The Board has, within 60 days of the date of this letter, and the date of this letter is November 20th, so until January 20th, submit to Mass DEP a report containing any findings on the matter, proposals for further action if warranted, and there's a phone number to contact Mr. Kleins at Mass DEP. My recommendation would be that as soon as she is able to have your health, acting health agent, go out and inspect the site in light of this letter and report back to the Board.
I figure that one, I'm in agreement with that.
Thanks. Thank you, Ben, thank you. All right, Town Council. Be Thanksgiving. Okay, doesn't look like we have many, if any, maybe one or two executive session?
I would think item 36.
Yeah.
Negotiations with MGM.
Yeah.
That would be executive under discussion with council, attorney-client privilege discussion.
Okay, how about 40?
Would be item 40 and 40, actually, 40 would be the only other. Item 42 is a negotiation item for employment, but it's just a notice to you, so it's really not an executive.
Yeah, okay. All righty.
And then, item 31 is information...
Number 41, Nick was wondering if that was exact.
No.
Okay. All righty. 31, Building and Benefits Administration offices. Nick, if you honor.
Just to advise the Board, and I think if you're, you've been in Town Hall, you could see that the office renovations are proceeding as planned. Kareen, Kareen Train Guezi, the Benefits Administration Manager, is already in her new office, her different office, if you will, and has been seeing employees in there. And the DPW is working on the other bill, other office, right adjacent to the clerk's office. They've been doing, from what I can see, a terrific job about getting things going and really organized. Talking with Mr. Fenny, Dan and I were at a meeting with him today, and the thought is, it may be until about the middle of December, may, you know, the third week or so before it would be complete. It will hinge a bit on when some windows come in, because there are going to be some sliding windows in that office to serve the public, and then another one between Dan and the clerical staff. So anyway, it's moving along as planned.
Okay, great. And then we have a job description for review.
So what I presented to the Board are just my proposals for job descriptions for the two positions in the Board of Selectmen's office. And what I would like to propose is, with the Board's approval of these, or further refinement, is to follow the model that the Board has had to date, and to allow for me, once the, first, perhaps, appoint a liaison, and unless there are substantial issues with the job descriptions as presented, to assign a liaison that would work with me to post, to allow for me to post them, also for me to contact the union and say that these are what the job descriptions are, and open... what the job descriptions are, and open that up for any impact bargaining that the union may be interested. They've been previously, they know what's going on.
Yeah.
But this will be the formal, more formal process, so.
So I would volunteer to be your liaison if you'd like, but that's entirely up to, you know, Mr. Chairman, you.
Okay, we'll get the thumbs up, so.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. Okay, and then, request to post a position and discussion of hiring protocol, I assume that would be part of this.
That was sort of what I was getting to, is so if the Board's okay with all of this, and you've just assigned a liaison, what I would ask is to follow that model of post, and then to, with the liaison and myself, conduct interviews and then make recommendations to the Board. But certainly, that's.
Well, you need the job description first, right?
Yeah.
And this is our first read on the job description. I would like to really go through that, because we should get two reads on it.
At the Board's discretion, that's what I was putting out there. So then what I'm hearing is that the liaison and I will work together, Selectman Bronski and I will work together, upon the final approval of the job description, to go forward with that recommendation process.
Yeah.
Okay, rather than work, okay, that's what I mean.
And I read through it, it looks fine to me, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then I'll present to the Board for December 11th, and hopefully, if there are, if there are any comments or, you know, changes that the Board would like to see made, please, by all means, let me know, and I can get the revisions out.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item is a notification from the ABCC regarding results for hearing.
Right. ABCC held a hearing with respect to an alleged violation by City Line Package Store selling alcohol to a minor. After the hearing, the Board determined that a can of beer had been sold to an underage individual, and as a result of that violation, the Board issued a warning to the City Line.
Okay, all right. And next, we have a request from Attorney Larry Levine regarding a proposal for parcels on Arch Street, Lindendale Street, Lindendale Avenue, Gascoyle Street.
Yeah, this was a request that had been submitted approximately a month ago, month and a half ago, by Attorney Levine, saying he had a client who had interested in paying $80,000 for certain parcels of land. And the issue where it stands before the Board is to determine whether the Board has any interest in selling this piece of municipal property, and if so, you would have to direct the Town Administrator to prepare an RFP for interested bidders with respect to it. And if you have no interest, then notify Attorney Levine and his client that the Board isn't interested in selling municipal property at this point in time.
Okay, now is that something, I mean, I personally don't know if the town has any interest in this, is this something we can address with some department heads who, you know, as to whether they would think the town has any interest before we can proceed accordingly?
Well, I think that the Board has done that in several instances, so if that's what the Board wanted to do, I'd get that right out.
Okay. Then we can go from there.
It's been a month since he asked me.
Right, but in any event, if we do decide to sell the property, we're going to have to get an RFP anyways, going to go out to bid, so, okay. All right, next item.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Planning Board has.
Just one other question, too, that I'll be needing to speak with Council about is, so if the RFP process occurs, is, will we need to go back to the Town Meeting then for the disposition of it? And that is one conversation that I've not yet had with Council.
You need authority from, you're going to need authority from Town Meeting in order to sell the property, sure.
That would be my understanding, but we haven't really had that chance to confirm.
I mean, the process normally is, if, when Mr. Pat is looking to purchase or sell property, first to determine or enter into a contract for the purchase or the sale of property, and having complied with all of the requirements of the statutes, and having the contracts contain a clause that makes it subject to approval by the Town Meeting if it's appropriate, and the general laws require Town Meeting's approval for the sale of municipal property. So then you have the contract, and the person desiring to purchase or sell the property to the community understands that even though the Board may have agreed, you may have agreed on price, that it still is subject to the Town Meeting determining by two-thirds vote that they are in favor of holding the position taken by the Board.
And I would assume, I should, you should never assume, we've got three parcels of land here, we'll have to, the RFP will be for them individually. You can't sell them in a group, right?
Well, you could sell them in a group if they're contiguous.
That I don't know.
I believe that they are.
Are they?
They are contiguous. There could be a building lot.
You could do it two ways. You could actually put out bids for individual parcels, and also ask for a bid for the three parcels at one unit, and determine which is most advantageous.
Okay, great. All right, now, the next item is a Planning Board response regarding the zoning bylaw change regarding noisy fowl.
Yeah, I don't have any underlying information with respect to the catalyst for the issue with the noise generated by roosters, apparently, or other fowl. But the Planning Board's response is, after discussing with the Board, that they feel that it is not something that warrants a zoning bylaw change, however, they are suggesting that perhaps it's something that the Board of Health might want to address, either under a general, they say under a general bylaw, but if you receive enough information to think that some action is warranted, you also could probably handle it under your own rules and regulations. But I would think that first, you would want to get a detailed report of the locations in town where this is an issue, to see if it really is a substantial issue in the community, or it's a one or two-spot location that's driving this.
I think this was generated by a specific complaint, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
And didn't we talk about having it go under our noise ordinance that we already have?
We did. That was part of the discussion.
Yeah.
So I guess we'll go back to that.
Okay, all right. Next item is a letter from Attorney Rook regarding a decision from the Police Training Committee.
At your last meeting, you'd received a letter from Attorney Rook regarding the actions taken by the Massachusetts Police Academy with respect to an East Long Meadow candidate, and looking for the Board to take some specific action. You have in your packet.
We have a response, right?
A draft letter from Labor Council to Attorney Rook indicating the town's inability to really take any action in connection with this, since the appointment of an officer is subject to the state statutory requirements under service, and that's something that the Board has independent control over.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is the, I would ask then through you to the Board if the response from Labor is acceptable. Once it is, we'll set that up.
Okay, yeah.
For signatures.
I know, I've read it, and it's, it's fine with me, I mean, it's, I don't know.
Myself as well.
I don't know if there's, has anyone had a chance to review it?
Yep.
Okay, should we?
Not in its entirety.
Okay, then we'll, I hate to hold off, but I guess we'll hold off till our next meeting to get it, hopefully proven, sent out. All right.
Blind, this is not going to prejudice anybody's rights in any event, because you can't take any action.
Right, right, yeah, I know. Okay, the next item is, there's a request from David Small, approval of BYO alcohol for proposed business, and Mr. Small is here tonight, so just to let you know. And I don't know if you read the details of the type of business and whatnot, but we're looking for.
Let me suggest to the Board that you are the liquor license commissioners, you are authorized to issue licenses for the sale and dispensing of alcohol within the community. You have no authority to approve a business to issue or to give away alcohol.
Well, they're not issuing or giving away, the people bring it in themselves.
Right, but it's still being served on a premises.
Okay.
If they wish to attempt to do that, and whatever liability they may face with respect to the actions that they're taking in doing that, what is not a good practice, my recommendation is, it's not a good practice for the Board to be authorizing private businesses to be able to bring alcohol onto their premises to serve to their patrons or to people who are visiting your establishments.
Okay, so what you're basically saying is?
Don't do it.
Well, we won't do anything, right? But they can proceed with the business, and it's at their own risk.
Take whatever risks they wish to take, it's a business risk in their own.
So I'm just curious, I'm, I go to a place called Crazy Burger, Bring Your Own Booze, so they don't have a.
Where's this?
In Rhode Island. So I'm just wondering how, so they must buy their own insurance policies? I don't know, I mean, how does a business go about doing that, then?
Well, actually, I think they're nuts to do it, to be honest with you, but if they are going to do that, if they even bother to tell their insurance carrier, then yes, they would have to get a liquor liability policy, because they're supposed to be managing that location for appropriateness of everything, and if they're going to have people drinking alcohol there, then, and there's no oversight by the community, because there's no license issued, then they're responsible if patrons drink there, leave, and have an incident off-site.
Now, this is a franchise, so I don't know, do they have guidelines?
Our insurance is specifically designed to cover liability in this instance.
Okay.
And to say, in the years, they've been open, they've never had an incident. And also, we will not be serving alcohol. They will be bringing it, we will supply a bottle opener, but they pour it, they touch, we don't even top off their glass.
Okay.
So some communities have actually regulations which prohibit non-licensed businesses from serving or allowing people to bring alcohol onto the premises. East Long Meadow, I don't believe has ever adopted that. Some communities actually allow businesses to bring, or to allow patrons to bring alcohol onto the premises.
As we discussed, I mean, there was a cooking business in town, you know, you go and learn how to cook, and they basically did the same thing, although in that, in that idea, your theory could be using it for cooking, but that wasn't the intent, that people were actually having a glass of wine or whatever with dinner, so.
And I believe the Board.
As a dabbling artist, I will tell you that wine does enhance the creative abilities while you're painting, and I can see the, I'm not arguing with you on, I can see the, from the business perspective, I think it's an interesting one, but from the town perspective and those folks who have to make sure that we're making the right decisions.
This is really not something you have any authority to issue or not issue.
Right.
This is a decision that.
The business owner makes.
Right.
Exactly, unless and until the Board were to determine that they were either not in favor of such an activity and prohibit it.
Right.
But if it's not prohibited.
Okay.
But it does impact your existing licenses to the extent that someone who wanted a glass of wine or a beer, who might go to an existing licensed facility, would now not go there.
Yeah, they're going to go there to paint.
But like anything, there's a broader, there's a broader concept.
I understand.
To the idea of allowing alcohol to come to businesses, not just the specific entity that's here, but.
Yep.
Other businesses that may exist in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for Mr. Small's benefit, point that the Planning Director did make a comment, a reminder that for the business, that he would need to at least go to the Planning Board and discuss with them the plans, and then also go to the Clerk's Office, business certificate and so forth.
All right, thank you, thank you. Next item is a draft, there's a draft of the Municipal Space RFP, and I know, I haven't had a chance to really review it, I noticed it's, I think you took it from another template from previous RFP, and I will review it, because obviously, I went and looked at a building in town, so I'll be happy to review this, because I know sort of what the parameters we're looking for, and I'll get back to you in short order, and then we can tailor it to what we're looking for and go from there. All right? And then, next item is the, there's a draft of a performance review document, Selectman Bronski.
Yes, well, as you know, I think strongly about being able to evaluate our employees. I think it's fair to us to go through the evaluation process, but it's fair to them as well, and while at Town Meeting, we didn't get permission to go forward with the personnel policy, we do have, we can give ourselves permission to work with our own employees, and I would like to start a process where we start doing some performance reviews with our employees, set goals, and go back in six months and review them. And I submitted that particular review, it's one that I've used in the past, I thought it was pretty thorough, but I'd like to get the process started, especially now, as we go forward, it can be tweaked, but I feel very strongly that, you know, we have employees who do great work, and if they haven't had an evaluation in, I don't know how long, it's important to do that, but it's important for us, for those folks who are managing the employees, if they have an area that needs to be improved, it needs to be documented. If we want someone to do a better job, and we're not documenting where they need to be doing a better job, then we have no grounds for correction. So I would very much like to get started on this process with those folks that we oversee.
Now, who's going to do the reviewing?
We would.
How are we, I guess my question is, some of these items on here, how are we going to know the answers to these?
Well, the way I do evaluations is I ask my employees to fill them out themselves as well. So I ask you to rate yourself.
Okay.
And then I sit with you and I say, and I ask you to tell me, you know, how did you rate yourself and why? It gives me an opportunity to learn about my employee, that I, things I might not know.
That they're doing.
But also, it gives me an opportunity to say, well, really, I don't, I don't agree with that, you know, and share examples. It's a learning process. For me, as a new Selectman, because I don't know a lot about what people are doing, but in the end, after going through the first process, I've learned a tremendous amount. I've talked about things that I think, based on talking with the people, areas they need to make improvements on, they've shared with me the areas that they're working on that I might not know. We set goals together, and we go back to it in six months and say, okay, well, how did you do, and, you know, these are areas I'd like you to improve on.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I would also consider, and this is something that we can discuss, for example, offering this tool to some of the committees that work with various personnel that we oversee. And I would, for example, the Appropriations Committee might have some thoughts on some of our treasurer, our accountant, not that we would, it would be something for us to look at and take into effect.
Okay.
You know, the Planning Department might want to help with our building inspector and his employees, and, you know.
The ones that are under our control.
The ones that are under our control, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So, and I'm happy to spearhead this, and, you know, we're.
Sure.
Just, your thoughts on the document that I gave you, if you have ideas for improvement?
Unfortunately, it was at the, at the end of all of the rest of it, so I did, I did go through it, and it's basically, I don't have any issue, I probably would want to see some additions to it, but like you said, with anything, it needs to be tweaked and kind of customized to what we have here in the town of East Long Meadow, but certainly as a starter, certainly.
I think using the same tool to evaluate our employees.
Exactly.
Is also really important.
So when did you want to start? Let me ask that.
I would like to start now.
Okay.
So.
Well, can you, Deb, can I ask, since you want to start now, can I ask that you give us until the next meeting?
Yes.
So that that way, because if you're going to start immediately, I don't want to make any suggestions and then have it, you have to go back. So I would just ask if you could give us until the next meeting, just to get this documented.
Does she have, can she email me suggested changes, being that I have the document, or should it go through, I mean, how does that need to work officially? Actually, you have the word "document" too.
I do. I think that it would, my advice would be that they would come directly to me and to put any of the changes together in sort of a tracked document, and then get that out to the Board prior to your next meeting. I think if you go directly email to email, that's.
That's right, not allowed. I knew it, that's why I asked. And your thoughts also?
I think it's fine, as long as it's limited to managerial personnel under their control of the Board.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is correspondence from A T and T regarding a lease, up there.
Yeah, that's an executive session, correspondence. A T and T has sent you a letter saying that they are having financial difficulties, uh, for evaluating existing sites that they have with an eye toward attempting to, uh, reduce their expense, um, and so they have sent a letter to the Board saying they'd like to, uh, adjust or talk with you about adjusting the compensation level that's currently in place for the lease of the tower that they have with the town, and, um, while reducing the, um, annual rate now, extending out the length of time that the lease would be in place and to talk with you about it. Um, I've had some discussions, um, with the Town Administrator, and, um, would relate to you two things. One, I think that the provision that A T and T is relying on the existing lease to allow them to be able to get out of the lease for change in technology and services is not applicable to this particular situation, number one. And number two, if they are not going to terminate their lease with the town, to ask you to modify your provisions and terms with them would be a violation of the actual, the original bidding process under thirty B, where the agreement was put out to bid to them. So, um, their determination is going to have to be whether they wish to try to terminate the lease, and if that happens, and the Board would have to make a determination whether or not you wish to let them do that, or to, um, seek to enforce your rights under the lease, saying that they don't have the authority under the provisions that they're doing it. Um, at this point, my recommendation would be to send a letter saying, do what you gotta do, but we, we don't have the authority to alter the lease under the terms you're showing, what you're asking.
Sure, okay. Is that a letter you send out, or you would?
I would send it out if you directly.
Sure.
Question, thank you.
Last item is just a notice that we have a request for a-
Contract employee to print negotiations for a new contract, when the current contract expires, or the Board expires.
Did we have the note on that?
On what?
Uh, for you to send that letter out?
For the A T and T?
Yeah.
We have to vote on it?
Excuse me.
Uh, you probably should take a position, but you don't have to take one, you can directly just send a letter based on the-
Oh, okay.
On the, uh, outline that I gave you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Um, I would make a motion to go to executive session to discuss matters of, of negotiations and also, I don't know what these, um-
Negotiations, um, to discuss matters of negotiation, uh, with Council regarding how to proceed, I mean, kind of, under Attorney-lying privilege protection.
Okay, to return to open session, I'll look to adjourn.
Just one more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, favor.
Aye.
Yes.
Um, Selectman Bronski?
Yes.
Selectman Thorpe?